Wednesday, June 17th, 2015. We will be resuming the budget hearings. We do have a busy agenda tonight, councilors. We have the final budget hearings. We will then have a short break, which will be followed by the review of the council as a whole committee of the whole budget process and any recommendations. And that will be followed, then there'll be another break, and that will be followed by a special meeting of the city council to receive a report from the council as a whole committee. So please bear with us. It's some paperwork and getting everything straight tonight and what we're doing. But we're starting out with the budget hearing, which starts with the Treasury Collector and the parking on page 63. Good evening, Mr. Brooks. On page 63, we have...
Those are the subtotals, and then just say that they're offset by the receipts. So you can read that total, and then that total, and it nets to zero.
Oh, okay. Less meter parking garage receipts, 80,957. And that's personal services and parking expenses, less meter garage receipts, 141,000, and that balances out. Any comments?
I was just gonna say that the expenses here are covered by parking meter receipts. So there's no direct impact on the city budget, but this is what the garage receipts and the parking meter receipts support.
Councilor Bean.
Mr. President, just on the parking meter receipts, we've had some garages closed, some changes in that, some meter review. How much has our parking meter receipts, have they gone up or down? I assume they've gone down, but what is the projected amount that we've seen change?
Okay, the last couple of years has been steady at about 225,000, 227,000. This year, to date, we're at 206,000, which is a little bit low. I would have to go back and look at a monthly breakdown to see if the lousy winter with the snow has affected the parking meter receipts. Specifically, I also know we've lost revenue at the Mill Street parking deck because the park and pay machine was vandalized several months ago, and we've just now gotten a machine back in place.
That's fixed now?
That is fixed.
And what's the balance in the enterprise fund that you have set up for parking?
Hold on. Is that in our budget at all or not?
I have a balance.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
403.
The balance before these transfers was 403,000. And it is separate from the budget. It is distributed to everybody. There is a balance. You could find it on the budget report that deals with revolving funds and trust funds. So there's a separate schedule that shows that.
So 403,000 is used as operating expenses. So at one time, you talked about possibly doing some upgrades with the garages and other improvements.
Correct.
And that would come out of this and not out of city funds. Am I correct?
As long as these funds last, yes.
Right, right, okay. The other thing, at some point, with this balance, if it was ever a chance, I know we talk about parking and parking studies and parking committees and all that, but still, nothing's really, we don't have a comprehensive parking program, whether it's the college neighborhoods or the downtown. At some point, we should be looking at that as we're looking at revenues and how best to take advantage of where we're situated here. Thank you.
In response to that, councilor, I'd just like to know that we will be getting a report from the parking committee that was formed regarding the overall subject of parking. Councilor Green.
Yeah. Hi, Kevin. My question is on the parking, the equipment and repair. I see that it's, in '14, it was almost 31,000. This year, 15,000, and then '16 requested 5,000. Are we fixing everything that's not going to ever need repair again, or why is there such a fluctuation in that amount?
That's the line item we paid for the park and pay machines at the Mill Street Garage and at the Putnam Garage. I think two years ago, we put one in at Putnam, and they were about $10,000 apiece. Put a new one in at Putnam, a new one last year at the Mill Street Garage, and that's the one that I've had to replace. So I'm spending another $10,000 this year on that. Once those are in, there's not, in terms of equipment and repair, there are not big-ticket items. Those are the big-ticket items.
To take care of them. And what's the longevity of those equipment?
Assuming they're not vandalized?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would bet 10 years, five to 10 years.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding parking? We will move forward to tax collection, page 67. Tax collection and treasurer, personal services, 380,110. Tax collection treasurer expenses, 237,200. With a tax collection and treasury total of 662,310. Any comments?
About all I'd say is that the budget is fairly stable. The changes in personnel have to do with step increases and so on. We are doing work and starting to do a lot of tax collection, tax title collection, foreclosure, those kinds of things. So those are costing some money. There has been money incurred in the past, so that's what I've been using at this time.
Councilor Beazall.
Governor, office supplies went from 10,000 to 15,000. It's 5,000. It seems to be quite a bit more than what was used in years past.
I think what I was doing was just trying to shuffle things around a little to make it reflect better what, the way we anticipate spending.
Okay, so do you feel that you're going to need that 15,000?
I guess to answer you, I would say at the time I did the budget, yes, I thought I would need it.
Okay.
I can't tell you specifically what I had in mind when I did that.
Okay. And also, under equipment replacement, you asked for $2,500, and it was zeroed out. Is there a piece of equipment that you need?
No. There was nothing specific. I think that was anticipating if we had to do some things with any equipment in my office, which primarily are the calculators, copiers, those kinds of things.
Okay. So would you feel comfortable taking the 5,000 out? Okay.
If you do, you do, and I'll have to live with it. I guess is the way I would express it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here to Kelvin. When you get postage, I was just thinking today's technology, and I'm not sure if the law allows you, but could you allow citizens to opt out of getting it mailed to them, similar to what we do with all of our other bills, and have it emailed to us? That could save us a lot of money and also provide a better service for people to have that documentation in hand. And I don't know if there's possibility to do that, or have we thought of that?
At this point, to be honest, I haven't thought about it. It's come up a little bit. We would have to accumulate email addresses for people in order to do that, and there would be some software issues, I'm assuming, to make that all happen.
I see as a voluntary, voluntary thing.
I understand.
And similar to what you do with your bank accounts and bank statements, just to limit the amount that you get in the mail, that if we could do that, maybe some incentive, I don't know, or not, but it'd be a way to cut down on costs, that's all.
Correct, correct. I think what, in mailing it and doing it consistently, we have the ability to say everybody got, everybody was sent a bill, and it was all consistent in how we did it. If you're doing email addresses and somebody's email address has changed, does that mean they didn't get, we didn't send it to them, or we did send it and...
I was gonna say, I don't know if the law allows it, but...
Yeah, right. I would have to, I would have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Green.
At this time, are we able to take any payments electronically or via credit card?
Yes, we do. People can pay their taxes and their water bills online through MCC. And if they go to the city's website, they can, there's a link to where they can pay their bills online. We do not take credit cards at the desk at this time in the office. That requires a little bit of a setup. And what's different with municipalities is that if the tax bill is $100, I have to collect $100 in taxes. So there's a fee put onto the transaction so that the customer would actually be paying $102, $103 instead of the $100, because I have to collect $100 of taxes. That is something that I would like to get, look into more. I think with this group, I've kind of said that I had a four-year plan with my job, where the first year I was working on taxes, second year cash, third year payroll, and fourth year parking. Parking keeps fighting its way to the top of the list, and the tax collection is taking me a lot longer than a year, so...
Right.
Yes, I'm aware of these, and I'd like to do it as soon as I can, but...
Okay.
Thank you.
And how do we incur, or where does the fee for the bank service charges at $18,000? What are we being charged every month?
That's for our lockbox services, and this is where, rather than the bills being paid to us at City Hall, it goes to a lockbox service at Century Bank. They process the payments and give us an electronic file that we can then directly input into Munis, and the money is going right into our bank account at Century. But we pay a fee for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding tax collection? Moving forward to workforce management, page 70. Finance and administration, workforce management, total of 113,866.
And that's just the cost of personal services for the two people that work in payroll or benefits.
Any questions regarding workforce management? Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Debt service, did you want?
Oh, I was thinking debt. Next is debt service on 181.
And that's okay, Mr. President. I forget about it, too.
We'd all like to forget about it. Do something different. Debt service is $4,415,000. Any comments?
The maturing debt has gone up because we anticipate paying down the temporary loan that we've taken this year. We're on a third year, and so we have to, we have to do some kind of a paydown. And we estimate that that'll be 220,000. The long-term debt interest has gone down because we have a little bit, we've been paying down the debt. And we did bump up the certification costs line item because we, I will be doing a permanent borrowing this year, which is a more costly process than just doing a one-year note.
Councilor Dean Natale.
Can you explain the short-term debt interest?
I can. I guess I look at that as kind of an insurance policy, that it's a budgeted item that we use part of because we, that's where we would charge the, the band that we have just issued, the short-term note, interest costs. But it's also there in case the city has to do any short-term borrowing in the course of the year. In the past, when cash flow was tight and there wasn't a lot of working capital in the city, we would have to do revenue anticipation notes, or RANs, so that we would have cash to pay bills. The city hasn't had to do that for several years because it's in a much better financial position. But it's still budgeted so that if something should happen and the city needed to borrow, the interest money is there to cover the interest costs. Something like, you know, I look at it as some kind of disaster. If a dam broke upstream and washed out several bridges and the city needed to do work, yes, we expect to have FEMA money coming in and other money coming in to help pay for things. But in the immediate period, the city would be deficit spending and having to borrow or needing to get access to cash to pay some bills.
What is the interest rate on that account? What do we typically have for a short-term loan?
For the interest, the interest we pay?
The interest, yeah.
The loan we just issued was about half a percent, maybe 55 basis points.
So 0.55%.
Yep.
So $100,000 loan, that would be, forgive me, that would be a fifth...
That's okay.
Wow, this is embarrassing.
I'd do the same thing.
5500.
0.055, $550 of interest. That's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to do that without confirming.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That's the joy of calculators.
Yeah.
So $550 of interest per $100,000 in loans that we take out. I understand that it's an insurance policy, but if we were to assume even 1%, $60,000 of short-term debt interest for one year would...
Be 10 million?
Exactly. It would be almost $10 million in loans that we'd have to take out in one year.
Right.
I'm not advocating we don't be conservative and we don't prepare for ourselves, but the fact that we haven't used this account in a few years, or not used it very much, and using that math, I think we'd be okay if we cut this in half. $30,000 would be $5 million worth of loans we take short-term. I think that's highly unlikely, 5 million. I mean, if we had to take a couple hundred thousand here or there, 30,000 would more than cover it. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we cut 30,000 from short-term debt interest. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Brooks regarding debt service? Thank you. Moving forward to public works. First one on the public works, repeat, page 93, recreation department.
Good evening, Councilor.
Good evening. Okay, page 93, recreation, personal services, 99,630. Recreation expenses, 30,500. Pool and splash park, $63,050. Total of $191,180. Good evening.
Good evening.
Any comments you'd like to make before we have questions?
Yes. So I'm here tonight to support the budget that I've requested for the recreation department for fiscal year 2016. You know that. So the last time I came before the board, I discussed the importance of having a thriving recreation department and the well-being of the constituents of the city, and shared information on the research of the correlation between healthy municipal government budgets and successful recreational programming. So I'll try to keep this short and sweet because I know that you have a very long evening. So a couple clarifications to the changes that I made from last fiscal year are, I've kind of itemized them so we can kind of go through, and hopefully I'll be able to answer all of your questions ahead of time. But in personnel, we've added our year-round, part-time recreation assistant, Beth Robbins. She was hired in December and has been a tremendous addition to the department. She handles the day-to-day administration tasks with care and courteousness, and has gone above and beyond to search out instructors for our new workshop series that are taking place out at Cogswell Park. She single-handedly put together the Upper Common Concert Series, which will take place this summer, and we've been able to expand the number of concerts, the genre of musicians, and found additional funding to help with the costs. So I don't know how I was able to do this job before. So, you know, I'm hoping in the future, you know, we may be able to fund her full-time, but it's been amazing to have her on, and I would continue to request those funds for her. The additional of a pool front desk staff is something that we've added on into the pool and splash park area. This is a safety measure. So one of the issues that I found is that the lifeguards were actually running the front desk while they were also, you know, in charge of being on the pool lifeguarding. So I want to make sure the lifeguards are there to lifeguard. That is their main purpose, is to scan, pan the pool, and make sure that everyone's safe. So I've added in this new position to allow them to do that without interruption. Special events, we've added more funds in that area, simply for the fact that we want to do more special events. We had a big success being, doing the Winter Festival, so I really want to be able to host more events like that. There's been a lot of the community asking for things like that. So upcoming in July, on the 18th, we're actually going to have an Art in the Park Day. So folks will have interactions with theater and craft programming, and we'll actually have volunteering artists that will walk, anyone that wants to, through sketches of our community garden at Gateway Park. So hopefully, that's going to be another really fantastic event. But funding for that allows us more creativity and to be able to create these events for the city and the constituents that live here. Training, the extra costs here are not for me, they are for my staff, so I want to be very clear about that. All of my lifeguards need to be Red Cross certified, as this is a national standard for certification. As many of you know, there has been a shortage of applicants for the lifeguard position, and it's not just here in Fitchburg, it's been statewide. Boston Globe and Channel 12 have just recently run reports on this issue. The cost on average is about $350 per person to get certification, and it only lasts about two years. So if I had extra funding in that training column, I might be able, I would be able to help our guards to either financially provide some of those costs for them to get their certification, or I'd be able to hire a Red Cross lifeguard instructor to actually come in and teach our staff, and then they would have a viable certification that they could make a pretty good income. The other piece for the training is CPR and first aid. I believe that all of my staff, the seasonal staff, should be officially certified and have a card to prove that they come from a national standard certification, like Red Cross or Heart Saver. Again, this extra funding would allow me to be able to bring someone in to be able to get that certification done for them, just as a liability. And then recreation expenses. We added a little bit to that line item because things like clothing for our seasonal staff, t-shirts for the playground program for the youth, program supplies for those programs, brochures, marketing in general, were never really included in this budget. So for us to really work efficiently and to be able to outreach to the folks that live here in Fitchburg, those are additional costs that we need to be able to consider. So those are the main changes that I've requested for next fiscal year. I hope that I have clarified some of them and clearly expressed the great importance of needing them. Yeah, so I hope that's answered most of your questions, but if you do have questions, please ask.
Well, I'll start off. Just a quick question. Under the recreation expenses, you have electricity, which in '13 was 12,000, went down to 6,982, jumped up to 10,670, and is now at 12,500. Is that just because there's an increase in cost of electricity, or is there an increase in uses of electricity also?
Both. Yeah, both of those reasons.
You've explained the increase in the usage?
No, there just has been, so the Stone House, we've actually had more events that are happening out there, so that's kind of a piece of it. The, I'm trying to think of exactly...
That's okay, but there has been more usage.
There has been more...
So it's been a combination of the two that has caused that.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilor Green.
Yeah. Alicia, how many parks are you taking care of with this budget?
That is an excellent question. I'm trying to think off the top of my head. There are probably, I'm trying to think, I don't know if I have it specifically. I feel very bad about that, but I can definitely share that information with you because I have a spreadsheet. I want to say for Unitil, there are probably about 12 different accounts, and Direct Energy is about the same as well, but I can definitely get that information to everyone.
All right. And the pool and splash park, how many, well, I know the splash park is up at Park Hill, but what other pools are you responsible for?
No other pools, only Coolidge Park. And then we also have a spray pad out at Crocker, Crocker Playground, I should clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Beazall.
Thank you. Congressman on the common, I get a lot of constituents that complain that we don't do a very good job advertising the dates. Is there, have you come up with a better way of advertising those so that people are aware of them? Because a lot of people say they'd love to go, but they don't know when they are.
Right. Sorry, is that...
No, that, that was one question, yeah.
Yeah, so we definitely have really pushed all of our Facebook marketing. That's one thing that I think the recreation department was lacking previously. So we've actually gotten a lot of folks and a lot of communication through the Facebook channels, which has been really fantastic. So that's one way that we've done it a bit differently. We're also going to do individual concert dates as well as multiple, so people will know who's going to be on what dates, and as well as like individual flyers. And Beth is currently printing those out, and they're about to go out. We'll do marketing at, you know, supermarkets, things like that, different locations, organizations, stuff like that. And it's also in our brochure as well.
The other, the other thing is, is I know we serve thousands of people, children, during the course of the summer months, and we have programs for them to actually get lunch and everything else, and there's reading. So I know that we had spoken about having, I'm gonna have my award meeting July 8th, right at the pool, so people can actually see how the pool works, see how it functions. I'm going to invite all, anybody who wants to go, any ward councilors. If the ward councilors want to invite their wards to go, it's open to everybody. But can you also have summer material available that evening for residents who want to come down and find out what's going on throughout the summer, where their kids can go, and what parks, and what's going on at each park?
Absolutely. It'll be at the pool anyway, but I'll make sure that we have extra stuff available.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Joseph.
Are you scaling back the playground program since you have half the amount? Are you coming back to...
No, that's an excellent question. So the reason that the funds there have changed a bit is that last summer and the summers previous, they ended up having two summer coordinators. And since we have added Beth in, she's taking the role of sort of the administrative properties that one of those positions would have. So in aspect, half of that's kind of rolled into, you know, what Beth is being paid. So the summer coordinator is only going to be, you know, that short piece of money. So that's why it went, jumped from 11,000 down to around 5. And then the, let's see here, the summer playground instructors, we actually did get rid of Howarth in the system for our playground programs, just because the numbers were really low. So hopefully, we can really focus on revitalizing the summer playground program, and I'd love to be able to grow it back out again.
How many participants do you have now?
Participants that we have right now, so the program hasn't started yet.
Right, but how many have you had, how many did you have last year?
Past, yeah. So it ranges from each different site. So like at Coolidge, you would imagine there's going to be more. So on average, there's probably about between 50 and 60 at Coolidge and Park Hill a day, whereas some of the other sites, like Cogswell, Phillips, Crocker Playground, Green Street, those would be around like the 30 kids per day mark.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alicia. I think it was three or four months ago, you sent us a copy of a PDF of the recreation programs throughout the city, which I just want to send kudos on that. It was very nicely done. And a lot of times, when I go into cities, that's one of the first things I see when I walk into a city hall, is their brochure on recreation program, because as you said, a healthy city depends upon, you know, healthy recreation programs and that. So I just want to say kudos to that, and, you know, one thought, maybe, you know, have some printed up to have at City Hall as people walk in or something like that, just to promote.
They're trying to keep us healthy.
And again, it's not only just for youth, it was also for seniors like myself and Councilor Boishman over here, that there are other programs that could keep us healthy too, which is good to see. So thank you.
Thanks.
Councilor Kuchmarek.
Alicia, thanks for being here today. So I'm pleased to see that you requested additional funds for special events, the pleasure of going to the... and the pleasure of going to the, the Winter Carnival last year at Cogzal, and I thought that was, you know, a wonderful event, and love to see that, you know, expanded and, open to even more residents of the city, and hopefully, they turn out in number. All too often, I think we get that kind of bunker or trench mentality during, during wintertime, and we just want to stay inside for, for six months out of the year, but being able to kind of embrace the season and all that it brings with it, and be able to have families and children enjoy it, I think is important. So, so, kudos to you for your efforts last year, and certainly love to see that expanded. But, in addition to events like that, what else do you have in mind? What else, could you give us a preview of maybe some things to come?
Yeah, I think I had like written some, so, a couple, we're constantly thinking about ideas, I mean, we've got an idea book in, in our office, so anytime we think of something, we kind of write it down. So, we can try to do things seasonally. So, we've been really trying to push more, instead of focusing specifically on sports, to have things that are more art-based or music-based. So, we've talked about doing either, I don't want to call, so, it's not a concert series, because we always do, rarely do that, but in fall and maybe spring, it might be possible to actually do like a music festival. And it's something that I'd actually spoken with the mayor a few times about wanting to try to get this mentality of having festivals. I think that's something that, it would bring other folks from outside into Pittsburgh, and it would be really exciting. So, that concept of working with the idea of festival, but things can be seasonally based, you know, so you can have some sort of harvest festival in the fall, since we already have a beautiful program for Halloween, it's fantastic. So, there's loads of different things that we could potentially do, but I would like to try to get it arts and culture-based, but there's also possibilities of bringing in like a third-party vendor to do like a inflatable 5K, because that's something that, you know, parents can do that with the kids, and parents want to do that stuff too, it's fun. So, then they have excuse of being out there with the kids. So, different ideas like that are kind of where we're trying to make it more of a community vibe, to be able to get more people out, especially multi-generational.
Well, we're certainly a diverse community, so, you know, some of these are going to be great, and some, some will fail, because that's the nature of events, and certainly being in that industry, I hope you, I hope you take some risks and see what works, and continue to expand the breadth and range of events available to our residents. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilor Dean Tally.
Can you explain the doubling of the recreation assistant?
Yes, because the last time that I came, we were just paying for the rest of this fiscal year, so from December to now, and so that would cover her costs for the entire year of fiscal '16.
She is part-time, correct?
She is 30 hours a week, so just over that part-time. Is it 30 to 25?
So, then she would, she would technically be full-time then, because she gets benefits.
Is that, is that how you would describe?
Well, it's 29 hours plus, correct?
Part-time, but she, she, because she works 20 hours or more a week, she qualifies for benefits.
This isn't a criticism of you, I, I just, when, when the request was made last year, and this went the same for Council on Aging, the Senior Center, I vividly recall, and someone here can correct me if I'm wrong, that these presentations we received were given to us as if they were part-time positions, working 20 hours a week. I don't believe in the testimony, it was definitive what the hours were, but I could be wrong. I guess what I'm saying is, is that I voted for these positions months ago because of the part-time aspect. That was the selling point for a lot of us, because we've been critical of adding people to budgets all over the place because of benefits and everything, we're trying to tame that, you know, tame that, and then we get these part-time requests, and we go forward with it because they're part-time. But, the definition of part-time has changed in a way, for me, from my perspective, in that the city considers anything over 20 hours, I like to say over 20 hours, it's full-time, because they're given benefits as if they were full-time. And, and I am not here to decry employees getting benefits, all I am saying is, I would prefer the requests come to us as what it really is, because I believe at the time, we weren't clear, we didn't know, these were benefited positions. I looked at 29 hours or 30 hours, and I said, well, that's not full-time, it can't be benefited position, but I believe the HR director told me a few weeks ago, we were talking about one of the employees, the senior center, that I think it was 29 hours, if they work more than 29, 29 hours or more over a set period of time, they become vested in the system. I didn't know that, that was the first I ever knew that, so, in this instance, and in the senior center's instance, that's what occurred. So, I guess what I'm saying is, it's a little frustrating for me that when the request came, I had no problem giving it a halftime position. If I knew at that time there were going to be benefits associated with these positions, I likely wouldn't have voted for it, in fairness to the other departments that I've said and done the same thing on. So, that was a lesson learned from me, and that's why I wanted to ask the question. But, since it's already in the pipeline, I am not going to support we change it, because the position is needed, I just wish that that were, and again, this wasn't your responsibility to tell us that. I wish we knew that before this request came. At the very least, we could have maybe amended it to 20 hours and said, here you go for 20 hours, if that was the wish at the time, I don't know if it would have been. Thank you.
Just following up on that, I would like to comment that, well, the, it has gone from 12.6 to 24.666, because it's gone from half a year to the full year. There is the reduction in the supervisor's position from $11,128 to $4,900, because this person has assumed those responsibilities, so we only need one person there instead of two, so that, that does offset that somewhat. Councilor Beazall.
Thank you, Councilor Hay. I have a question I'd like to ask you to the mayor, if I could do that. So, the federal law right now is 30 hours, anybody over 30, averages over 30 hours, through Obamacare, has to be given, offered healthcare. So, the city has 20, so, I guess, is that a city policy that, is the 20 hours? Because I know the federal policy is now 30 hours.
I, I can't speak to the difference between the two, but as far as I've been here, it's always been 19.5 or higher, that they would be considered eligible for benefits. I'm not sure if that's something that's, I mean, I know it's, it's been a city policy. I don't know if the adoption of Obamacare really trumps that, because I think the city can do better, but not worse.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Recreation Department? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, under Public Works, we'll go to Administration and Engineering, page 144. Commissioner Laxo, good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works, Administration, Engineering and Planning, Personal Services, total of Expenses, $6,900, total of $350,951. Any comments, Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, the past year's been an extremely busy one for DPW, in addition to the normal workload of maintaining the city's infrastructure, we have many projects that have been completed or are still in progress, and everybody in the department deserves thanks for their accomplishments and, and their help over the past year. We've had a number of personnel changes, we're fortunate to have brought on three top notch people in leadership roles, all, all of whom are giving their budget presentations tonight, Alicia Day, Jeff Mirasky in wastewater, and John Delain in water. I should also add that our longtime clerk, Paulette McLaughlin, is retiring in a couple of weeks, and, you know, we'll miss all of her assistance as well. We continue to make progress on our streetlight conversion project. During the past year, we financed the project, ordered all of the equipment, and hired an installation contractor. The streetlights have been stored at Putnam Place since March, and we're finally getting delivery of the streetlight controls, starting next Monday, and that will continue over the following two weeks. So, we're meeting with the contractor tomorrow afternoon to nail down the schedule, so, I'm, I'm hoping the bulk of the work will be done in July and August, but, you know, I'll let you know how the meeting goes with the contractor tomorrow. As you know, we had a very difficult winter, and our crews did a great job of keeping the streets open. It would have been a lot worse if we didn't have the two new dump trucks that the mayor and council funded for us, that made a big difference. And we also had a, a new private contractor in the area who provided several large trucks that helped out also, so not relying so much on pickup trucks anymore to, to do the bulk of the plowing. We continue to seek grants to fund projects, such as Columbia Ave, Shea Street, and different CDBG projects, and we're going to keep on seeking grants in the future, there's the opportunity maybe to fund some projects now to reduce the flooding on John Fitch Highway, and we'll be looking at that over the next couple of weeks. One thing we're working on is public communication, you might have seen the newspaper announcements that have been running every Monday over the past month with different DPW projects that affect the public, so that's, we've had a lot of positive comments from the public on that, and so we thank the Sentinel for their assistance. Also, we've been meeting with different department heads on utilizing Code Rad, that will be a good tool also for letting the public know of, you know, certain projects, plus we're looking into how to use social media more effectively. Concerning the fiscal year '16 budget, the only real significant change is that DPW was taking over the traffic signals from the Building Department, that's quite in practice throughout the country. We're outsourcing the work to a private firm that will do the work on an as-needed basis. We just got the bids in last week, and, you know, we hope to have them available on July 1st, when, when Harry retires.
That's it? Councilor Bean.
Hey, Mr. President. For you to, Commissioner. Again, I want to applaud you and your, your department for the work you do. Anytime I request anything, it's, it's always a quick response, and it's usually, it's always a positive response, and the job is always done right, so I appreciate that. And you've had a difficult winter, and you did well with that. Also, I want to commend your, your, the men and women on the department for the work they, they do on, on the Main Street area, where typically that might have been contracted out, but the city worked alongside contractors and got that work done, and I thought, I thought it looked real great. In addition, the only thing I was, I was concerned about in here was, is the conditions of the roads. They're not addressed here, obviously, I don't see any money here for road resurfacing and that. Is that something we do, you're planning on doing as a, as a capital expense someplace or a loan order, or how are we going to get our streets paved, I guess I'm saying, Commissioner?
I mean, there's, there's been no money at all in the city budget for paving, we rely on Chapter 90 funds, plus with the wastewater projects, you know, we will be paving those streets as well, using wastewater funds.
Will those be done this fall, or not?
Some of them will be done this year, and then the rest of them next year.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's my biggest concern, and, and is what I hear out there, is, you know, what about street paving? And I don't know if you've advocated to the, either the Capital Improvements Commission or through, through the mayor to look for a bond issue, maybe to, to do a, you know, a mini-bond, to be able to pave streets or something like that, it's just, I don't know if we're ever going to get caught up, we're never going to do it on our, on our budget itself, on this budget. It's really going to have to be a, a bond issue of some sort, and I know in the past we've done that, and the city has done that, I don't know if it's something that maybe you and the Capital Improvements Commission or the, or the Finance Committee can look at, because we're never going to get caught up on the streets. I mean, you drive through the streets now, and it's just getting worse, not getting better. And even if you, you know, add in the, the streets that they've dug up now through the wastewater projects, I mean, there's still a lot more beyond that that need to be done. And, and, you know, my recommendation is that we look at a bond issue. I know we're retiring the, the high school bond pretty soon, there's, you know, might be some opportunity to do a small bond issue, whether it's, you know, for, for street paving and some other things to add into it, but if we don't attack the street paving program soon, it's, we're going to be in a real dire, dire situation.
Yeah, that's true, right. I mean, right now, it's a losing battle, because the Chapter 90 funds don't provide anywhere enough, near enough money to pave what needs to be paved every year, so, we should be really paving about 10 miles every year, and, and a normal year excluding, you know, the wastewater contribution, we can pave maybe three miles a year, so every year it's three steps forward and 10 steps backward, so, you know, some alternate funding should be provided.
I guess what I'm saying to you and to the mayor and the Finance Committee, they should look at, you know, doing a bond, you know, if we have some opportunity to, to borrow some money, it should be for street, street resurfacing, because we're just getting too far behind the eight ball on this one.
Yeah, thanks, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Just following up on that, Lenny, if I could just ask, so, are you saying that every street or road that the water project has dug up, that those streets will be paved?
Yes, almost all of them.
Almost all of them?
Yeah, I mean, there's a...
No, no, and I'm not being a wise guy, but it leaves some out. Are there people whose streets will not be paved after there was work done for the water project? Are they aware of that, or is it, all of a sudden, you're going to go out, and you're going to pave, and it'll be 90%, and there's going to be 10 streets that didn't get it, and we're going to get phone calls going, excuse me, but what the heck's going on?
Yeah, the ones that are not being paved from curb to curb are the major streets, such as Summer Street, where the, the contractor owes us a, you know, full permanent patch, so Summer Street should be in good shape. The other one is Wunenburg Street, where, you know, a short stretch of that was, was dug up last year, but I think so much of it was dug up, they'll end up paving most of it anyway, but...
Okay.
I mean, and the problem that we ran into on the combined sewer separation streets was that the original plan was to mill and overlay the streets using wastewater money for that, but once we got into it, we found out that the streets were in such bad shape that that method doesn't work, because by the time you grind the streets, there's nothing left. So, we have to chip in with, you know, Chapter 90 to pulverize most of those streets and lay down a base course before we can put on the second layer using the wastewater funds.
Okay. My second question has to do with the comment you made about CDBG grants, and Councilor Bean's comments about seeing the city work in conjunction with the contractors, as an example, on the island down in front of where the CVS is going to be on North Street now. And I'm just trying to get a handle on how that money flow works, and, and where we're getting paid, and is it to our advantage? Because I guess one of my concerns is, I go down, and they're doing great work on that island, and I see the city DPW guys doing it, but I'm thinking, another part of me is thinking, well, isn't this a CDBG grant? And as part of that grant, don't we get the money that we should be able to hire somebody to do this, so that us DPW employees could be doing other work? Or is it advantageous to us to have them doing that, because we make some money off of it?
Well, there, there are a couple of advantages. One is, you know, it's much more economical to use our people as opposed to hiring a, a private contractor for projects like that.
Economical to the CDBG administration program?
Right, because they can get more done if, if we do the work ourselves, as opposed to hiring a contractor.
Okay, so they're doing a bigger volume of work with what they've got for money, because you're, you're charging them less, do you charge them?
Yes.
Okay. And you're charging them less than going out, okay.
And that's the other advantage, is because our crews aren't fully funded by the budget, so every year I have to find $100,000 worth of work funded elsewhere in order to pay our crews, so we rely a lot on CDBG funds to do that.
Okay, thank you. Council Green.
Lenny, I do have to commend you and all of your workers down there at the yards. And it was a real eye-opener this winter, when I got to ride along in a storm with Craig in one of the big trucks, and until I think the public actually experience what some of your plow drivers have to go through, they would really have no idea how difficult that job is, so I commend you wholeheartedly on your efforts. My question, in looking over the budget, is, it looks to me like there are, I don't know, four or five positions that are, that are either no longer needed, or that are no longer funding, Junior Engineer Aid, Planner 1, 2, a Planner 2, CDBG, the Program Management Assistant, are those, are those people that we have lost, or that you no longer need in, in your department?
All those positions were transferred to the new Community Development Department a couple of years ago, except for the Junior Engineering Aid, and that position was eliminated many years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Council Beazall.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, I know that Council Green brought it up, and on the roads, I got some statistics from Lenny's department, and they started tracking pavement back in 1998. Since then, we've paved 65 miles of road, on an average of 3.8 miles. Since then, we've paved 65 miles of road, on an average of 3.8 miles. There's 212 miles in the city. If we follow this trend by 2018, we would have paved 77 miles of road, and they would have, the 77 miles would have to be on course to start being repaved. So the question is, is we're never going to catch up unless we do something on that. And I've actually asked Counsel President Hay to actually have it as part of our council's whole meeting, so that we can kind of come up with a meeting, because that is one of the biggest concerns residents have, are the conditions of the roads, and I think the DPW gets a knock for that. And we actually look at what support you're getting from the city. There really isn't any. The second piece of that is, I know you just borrowed a new piece of equipment, and you and I talked about getting an additional brush cutter for it. The brush cutter's $25,000, and, you know, you look at the entrances to our cities, and that's how our new economic development person is going to sell our city. By when people first come into it, the first impression that they have of our city is our entranceways. And I know that you had said at this particular moment, you have some guys that are out. How many positions do you have right now working and fully staffed? I mean, what would be, if you had a wish list and say, what was the ideal amount? How many more people would you need to get things done, like brush cutting and some of the maintenance done on the entrances to the city?
A couple of years ago, we asked for six new positions, and, you know, two of those were funded, so, you know, another four would be great, but right now, we just need to get our people healthy and back to work, so we can get fully staffed, you know, as far as the people that we have on board now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel Boschman.
Lenny, how are you? Going back to what Counsel Bean said about the roads, I got a question. As you resurface these roads, you grind them up, are we going to go deep enough so we have curbing, or are we just going to pave over pavement so we no longer have a curbing? It's all part of the road, so when we have heavy rainstorms, we get, our constituency is saying that the water's going to the air yards, and we're having all kinds of complications. Are we going deep, are we going to be going deep enough and raising the curbing at the same time? And if not, why not?
I mean, we do that wherever we can. I mean, it just, you know, adds on greatly to the cost, especially if we raise the curb and have to raise the sidewalk at the same time. But we're paving Kimball Street from Laurel Street to Rollstone over the next couple of weeks, and we're going to try a technique there where we, you know, remove a lot of pavement against the curb to expose more of it, and we'll see if that works.
Now, when you're doing that road, are you going to put piping on one, I think I talked to you about that, on one side of the road as you're heading down to Water Street, down Water Street, that part, right where the wall is, where there's always in the winter, ice buildup on that road, where you have to send a grader up there all the time to take care of it?
Yeah, we looked into that, and we think that's a maintenance issue. We did make some drainage improvements there a few years back, and it's just a matter of, you know, going back and getting that working again. That should take care of most of the problem.
And to Counsel Beazall's remarks, I want to inform you, Counselor, that Franklin Road was paved approximately seven to eight years ago, if I'm not mistaken. And if you come back and you look at Franklin Road today, it's probably have to be done within the next two years, it's falling apart already, just like part of Kimball Street. That part of Kimball Street was done probably 10 to 15 years ago. So we're never, like, I agree with you guys, we're never going to get caught up, because once we get done Franklin Road, we're back to Kimball Street, then we're back up to Franklin Road to St. Joseph, Madison, and all the streets from our area never get done. I don't know what we're going to do. I really don't know. But something has to be done, because the people are spending a lot of money on cars, and they're getting damaged. And damaged, they are getting damaged. And, you know, that's all I have to say.
Counsel Kuchmerich.
Commissioner Laxo, thanks for being here tonight. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we don't give you any money for the roads. We don't give you enough money, you know, to fix and maintain everything that's falling apart around the city. But the work that you've been able to do in the short time that I've been a counselor has been nothing short of outstanding, you know, from your, you have 11 different, 12 different people around this table who send you, you know, questions, comments, concerns, and problems, you know, probably on a 24-hour, 24-hour cycle that never ends, and you're always responding to them, usually within a couple of hours. But, you know, the reality is, I think you're holding, you know, this city together with, you know, bubble gum and duct tape, and, I mean, you do it as well as anyone in the Commonwealth, and I think your work that you do should be commended. Really, there's no one whose opinion in this city I value more than yours. I think you're a true expert in the field, and we are lucky and privileged to have you working for us.
Thanks.
Absolutely. So, you know, I think, I think Counsel Beazall's comments and Counselor Bean's comments are absolutely right. You know, we have to find some long-term plan to really tackle the road and infrastructure issue in the city. We just can't keep relying on Chapter 90 with a continually decreasing pool of money to fix our roads. If we can't fix them, no one else can. So we have to find a way to put together, you know, whether it's a 10-year plan or a 30-year plan, but we have to figure out how to catch up and how to at least be able to put together a cycle. I don't blame that on you. You're working with what you have, so I think we need to find a way to come up with a revenue stream to be able to tackle at least the major corridors, and then be able to look at, you know, how we're getting to these side streets and how often. But thanks again for all the work you do, and look forward to working with you in the next year.
Counsel Boschman.
Lenny, one more question. This farmout, I'm not an advocate of farmouts, so we're farming out the lights. Is it going to be cheaper for the city to farm it out, or is it going to be better for us to have an electrician here on 24, on call, really? He'd be here working during the day. If we need him, he'll show right up like Harry does and fix the lights if the parts are here. Or are we going to have to wait weeks on end to have the lights fixed? I mean, if we don't have the parts and we have to special order them, I can understand that. But I think you told me numerous times you could use an electrician, too.
I mean, having an in-house electrician would only pay if we can keep him busy, you know, 40 hours a week, so that would have to be looked at. You know, the traffic signals alone are a 40-hour-a-week job. It's mainly emergency work, so, and Harry could do so much on his own, and then he would have to hire a contractor to do the major work anyway. But, you know, we've been sending our guys to training, and we've been visiting all the different traffic signal locations with Harry to get up to speed, you know, on maintaining the system. But the main drawback that we'll have now is responding to emergencies where we won't, you know, have our own person with an electrician's license going out at 2:00 in the morning to make a quick repair. You know, we'll, you know, we'll have to put the lights on flash or something, and then call the contractor who'll show up a few hours later to, you know, to do the work.
So let's look at Laurel Street and Putnam Street. If you're coming up from Market Baskin, and you're headed to, it's Kimball Street, and you stop at the lights, you got one light that's completely out. You don't even know if it's on or off. It doesn't, it doesn't turn on, the green, the go. You have to look at the one closest to you. So how long do you anticipate that, for somebody to come up and change a light bulb, if that's what it needs? If you have to, if you're going to subcontract it out, unless you guys are going to do it?
The contractor's required to respond within, you know, two or three hours to work.
Oh, two or three hours.
And then depending on the nature of the problem, you know, he either has to make it safe right away, or, you know, and then order the equipment that's needed to make the repairs, or, you know, or fix it himself on the spot. You know, a lot of that equipment is old also, so, you know, some of the parts aren't available anymore or easily available, so it's, when something goes wrong, it's a challenge to get it fixed.
All right. I'm still, I'm not really in favor of farmouts, I'll be honest. I call it farmouts, whatever, whatever, whatever word you want to use, just call it farmouts. I'm not that much a pro-advocate of farmouts.
Counsel Dean Tally.
What's frustrating about the road condition is, and it's felt at the local level, and there's no greater evidence than the condition of our roads for the following statement. There was a supposedly $800 billion stimulus plan that was passed at six years ago. $800 billion that we didn't have, that we borrowed at the federal level, that our congressional delegation said would go to infrastructure. Well, and well said and done, 3% of that went to infrastructure. The rest of it didn't go to infrastructure. How much would it cost to fix all the roads, the poorest, the poorest, the most poor-conditioned roads in the city? How much would it require to fix those roads?
Oh, maybe 20, 25 million dollars, something like that.
25 million dollars. So, $25 million, you know, divided by, let's see, 25 million bucks out of $800 billion is 3/100ths of a percent. For what we spent on that ridiculous package, we didn't get anything out of it. Our roads still look like crap. So what's frustrating to me as a taxpayer and as a local representative is how I got to hear the eggheads in DC who don't know anything about what goes on around here tell us that that was for infrastructure when it wasn't. And the solution to the problem is, we need another infrastructure bill for another trillion we don't have to fix the roads, which won't get fixed. So we're never going to fix the roads, because it's not possible. We don't have $25 million sitting around in the bank. We could have had it happen five years ago, but it didn't. And that's what's frustrating to me. I hope people watch these meetings and understand what the truth is about what's really going on here, because if the money really went to roads and bridges five years ago, we could have fixed all our roads for 25 million out of a trillion-dollar stimulus package. So there's your evidence, ladies and gentlemen, as to where that money really didn't go to. Thank you.
Any other questions on administration and engineering? Counsel Caddy.
In other words, if you're paving, let's say, two or three miles of road this year versus 15 miles of road, is there a volume savings with the contractors where they're not moving the equipment all the time, they're buying their asphalt in volume?
There might be. I mean, right now, we sometimes, you know, provide a list of streets and send those out for bids every year and get prices for those specific streets, but we don't do that. We just, we go out with a three-year contract, which is out for bids right now, in fact, you know, with just estimated quantities. But usually, you know, the more you do, the, you know, there is a quantity discounts or economies to scale.
You know the cost? How do they charge per square foot on paving? Or by tonnage?
Yeah, it's tonnage for the asphalt.
Is there any way of coupling with other communities? In other words, Lemester, Fitchburg, Gardner, if we went out to bid on our streets together under one contractor, would that get our volume up enough to save the city some money?
Yeah, it could be. We'd have to look into that.
Thank you.
Counsel Green.
Lenny, do you know offhand about, at one point I thought that I had heard that to repave a street, it was about $1 million a mile. Is that, is that fair, or is that too high or too low, or do you have a better number?
It probably averages a half a million per mile.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding administration and engineering? Moving forward to Streets, Parks, and Cemeteries, page 146 through 150, starting on 146 with Public Works Cemetery. Personal Services, $225,018. Cemetery expenses, $48,300. Total of $273,318. Counsel Dean Tally.
Summer Help, it says $26,000. Approximately, how many individuals would that cover over a summer month, over a summer period?
Yeah, we have four people working out on the grounds, and then one in the office doing data entry.
So there's, for the, so the cemeteries and the parks are kind of a, they kind of work in tandem, right? Is that correct?
Right, but we fund the parks, Summer Help separately.
Yeah, so how many employees in the cemetery, full-time?
Four.
Four.
Including the superintendent.
Okay. And the Summer Help, you said there's five funded out of that $26,000?
Yes.
Have you requested more Summer Help funds in the past to supplement the summer months, the good weather months, if you will?
Yeah, I mean, we have increased it over the years, so we have more people working now than we did, you know, five or six years ago.
Would you be opposed if that were double? You could have eight people?
No, that'd be great.
I'm asking because there's, how many parks in this city?
Yeah, something like 40 if you count everything.
40, and there's how many cemeteries?
Five or six.
Five or six. So there's technically five cemetery, there's five cemeteries, there's 40 parks, and we have full four-time people at all times. I'm sorry, how many are in the parks? I know we're going to get to parks in a minute, but it's...
Four full-time.
Four in the parks, four in the cemetery.
Right.
So we've got eight people total to do over 45 tracts of land. And we have four, four Summer Help individuals that are actually on the field, not the fifth one who's doing data entry. I'm talking to the ones that are on the field.
Plus two in the parks.
Okay, so where I'm going with this question is, these Summer Help individuals, $26,000 divided by five, roughly, it's probably $4,000 or $5,000 a person. You know, we talk about reallocating cuts from the budget. This is one area we could probably supplant, supplement for the summer months, because I used to work as a cemetery employee, and I hear people sometimes tell me, well, four people for five or six cemeteries, that's more than enough. And I said, well, what do you, I say, what do you base that assessment on? Not only, cemeteries have to be the hardest pieces of land to maintain, only because you have all the headstones, you're driving the mower, so it's easy to go up and down, but then you can't weave in and out of the stones. You need someone following the guy mowing the lawn to do the weed whacking, and then you got to avoid the flowers and the monuments and everything. It's, sometimes it can be very difficult for four people to maintain one cemetery. So where I'm going with this is, I would like to give more money to Summer Help to support the full-time workers, because I still don't believe there's enough to cover everything, especially with the holidays, Memorial Day weekend, July 4th. There's pressure to maintain the parks. So when there are cuts from this budget, if there are cuts from this budget, I would not be opposed to allocating more resources, to hiring more young people who are looking for work in the summer, because it's a very good job to have for the summer months, I know from experience, but it would go a long way in helping the guys on the field get what they need to get done, because I recall when I worked at the cemetery, it freed up one of the other full-time guys to do some other things that I obviously was not qualified or experienced to do, more intensive tasks. So I would like to see that account increased over time, to be honest with you. And I really don't think for $5,000 to have one more person, that's going to stretch the budget. I think I've proven that time and time and again, that we could give you 25 grand for five more full summertime help, and it won't break the bank. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the cemetery budget? Moving forward to page 48. Public Works Highway. Highway Personal Services, $848,997. Highway Services and Supplies, $660,000. Highway Garage Repair, $453,630. Total, $1,903,227. Questions or comments from the counselors regarding the Highway Department? Counsel Dean Tally.
More of a comment on, a comment of thanks for your staff in Highway specifically, because of the plethora of calls that I get on a weekly basis that go to your office. The response times, the attention to detail, I'm very, I've always been very impressed and very satisfied with the services we've ever provided. And I just wanted that to get relayed to you, to your staff, that as much is on their plate, I, and I'm sure everybody else in this room appreciates the hard work that they do under the financial constraints that you're under, because the complaints you get are infinite, but yet you guys still find a way to get them done when you're, when they're identified. So it's a test... So, it's a testament to how well the resources are being allocated, given the short staffing levels. So, I just want your, your, your staff to know that it's greatly appreciated, the hard work that they do.
Yeah, thanks, I'll let them know.
Any other questions or comments regarding the Highway? Counselor Joseph.
I echo the sentiments of Counselor Dean Tally. Um, Streetlight Contract and Services, we, is the total saving, is it, is it a break even to go to LED with the lease and the maintenance?
It's a break even for ten years while we're paying off the lease, and then once we get the lease paid off, ten years from now, um, you know, it'll be cut in half, you know, the streetlight budget, you know, aside from any rate increases in the meantime.
Does that include electricity as well?
Yeah, well, it's, who knows what will happen with that, but, uh, yeah, the lease payment, which is about a hundred thousand dollars a year, will, will disappear in ten years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the Highway Department? Counselor Tran.
Mr. President, Commissioner, I'm looking at the heavy motor equipment operator, and I'm comparing mine item to the special motor equipment operator. The former one has twelve full-time employees, and there's a difference, an increase of five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, but the latter one has only two thou, two employees, and we're increasing it by twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, what happened there was, um, while I was repairing, preparing the budget, we had twelve heavy specials and two specials, but, uh, one of them has attained the licenses, you know, to be promoted to a, a special. So, I forgot to change the number of full-time equivalents, so it should be eleven heavy specials and three specials.
Okay, so, so there was one promotion from motor equipment operator to special motor equipment operator?
Right, and it's a, it's a, it's like an incentive system. You can promote yourself really by getting the licenses required to advance from a light to a heavy, and then a heavy to a special. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on Highway? Counselor Caddy.
When the streetlights start being turned back on or, uh, when they're changed, what's the plan? Are you gonna start with the lights that have been turned off first and get those transferred to the new lighting, and then go to the present lighting?
Um, yeah, the plan is to do the main roads first, uh, because those are all of a, a certain wattage, and then they'll fan out into the neighborhoods, and they'll be doing all the lights within a neighborhood at once.
So, they'll go by...
Just so they're not traveling back and forth.
Um, but, but all the lights will be turned on?
Yes.
Do we have a master light plan that shows? I did have a woman contact me recently during the ice storm. Uh, one of the lights came off the pole and, or hung off the pole, and someone came by and took it off there and left with it. And, uh, will, will we know that there was a light there and that, that will be put back up? I mean, I know it's kind of complicated, but...
I mean, we do have a master list, you know, that we worked out with Unitil, as, you know, as well as a, a map to go with it. But, um, in cases like that, you know, I'm not sure if they're in the, the database or not, just depending on when the inventory was done.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counselor Bochum.
Are we gonna, you're talking to Counselor Caddy, he's asking a question about putting all the lights on. Are we gonna put heavy lights on, heavy light there is in the pole when there's no residential area and nobody's walking but the animals and the squirrels and the, and the bears and that? Do we actually need them way out there in that part, part of the country? Oh, that part of the city, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, basically, where we formerly had lights, uh, that's where all the new lights are going. You know, we're just swapping out the, the, the old for the new on the existing mast arms. Um, I mean, most of those, you know, should've been installed for, uh, reasons for traffic safety, pedestrian safety. You know, e- even if they are out in woods, you know, for example, on sharp curves in the road out in the country, we might have a, a street light there.
What's you use Nicholas Road going up to Burbank Hospital? There's, there isn't sold, I've never seen anybody walk up there in years. I mean, I'm not up there all the time, but you got lights up there that benefits nobody. Why? Where we have high crime area, why not put more light in where the high crime areas? Instead of having, lighting up the, the area that's got the animals, that nobody uses. I mean, we don't use that hospital for ER care anymore. We only, we only go up there during the day, and then most of the work is done at Lannister.
Counselor Dean Tally.
Well, to Counselor Bochum's question about why we don't have lights in more crime area, crime, crime-ridden areas, one of the justifications for reducing the light six years ago is what it would, would, it would drop the crime rate if the place was dark. No one in the country heard of that nonsense, but that was what was peddled to us six years ago. At the same time, the Lemonster mayor said, "How did you fight crime in your areas?" And he said, "More illumination," and he was a police officer, and this city said, "Less illumination would improve our crime statistics." Even though there's no traffic pedestrian-wise there, there is still a need for lighting on all the streets for driver safety. I, I driven by that area before to get to somebody's house. It's a requirement, but, you know, the whole problem with the streetlight issue has always been from residents, how was it determined how the lights were turned off? And hopefully, these will all get back on and put this matter to bed, because I myself am beyond saturated with it. And people in the city, by and large, have a legitimate gripe about the fact that their light was shut off and this person's light wasn't. I, I hate to, I hate to say that, but that, that's, that's how they feel. And they, like I, am skeptical of the lights coming back on. It's one of those, "I'll see it when I believe it" moments. I, I mean, so, so there, all the lights hopefully will be back on this year, and even though there's not a lot of pedestrian safe, uh, traffic, there needs to be lights for vehicular driving traffic, no question about it. But I agree with you, Counselor, more lighting in crime-ridden areas is, is one of the deterrents we could use, but that apparently is not the policy right now. Thank you.
Counselor Bochum.
Sorry, I'll say.
We'll move forward to Public Works. Personal Services, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. Expenses, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Total of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Any questions for Mr. Laxo regarding the budget for parks? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Moving forward to Snow and Ice, one fifty-two. Snow and Ice, four hundred thousand dollars. Any questions for the Commissioner regarding Snow and Ice account? Moving forward to traffic signals. Oh, Counselor Dean Tally.
Um, so, so the total right now is three hundred and thirty thousand. One, one ten, uh, apiece for Snow and Ice? Oh, plus the thirty-five, so four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Um, okay, I had a question, but I don't really think that it probably further the discussion, so I'm also, thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving forward to traffic signals, one fifty-three. Total of one hundred thousand dollars for traffic signals. Counselor Dean Tally.
Lenny, was this budget in building previously?
Yes.
So, now that it's being transferred to your jurisdiction, are you going to be contracting the work through your budget and not built? I'm assuming building had a private contractor that does these repairs and replacements?
Yeah, they didn't have an on-call contractor, but as emergencies, uh, came up, they, they had to fund it.
Okay, so, what was the reason or justification why it is no longer building and it's now with you?
Uh, mainly because the electrician that they had within their department is retiring, and, um, you know, they won't have anybody taking his place to do that sort of work. Um, so, you know, it's very common for traffic signals to be handled by DPW, so, uh...
So, without an electrician, without, without our electrical inspector, who is integral in that process, what is moving the budget over to you gonna accomplish? You don't have an electrical inspector.
Right, and I don't believe the new electrical inspector will have electrician duties. I think the plan is that he'll be strictly an inspector.
Okay, so this will be one hundred percent contracted out?
Yes. I mean, our people have to respond to emergencies to, um, you know, put lights on flash or whatever. Uh, but as far as the electrical work goes, it'll all be contracted out.
Just out of curiosity, was there a reason why the electrical inspector was integral in that, that type of work? And now we don't, they're not gonna use an electrical inspector to do that kind of work anymore? I mean, what are we losing by not, wh- wh- why did we have our electrical inspector doing traffic signal maintenance, and now we're saying we don't need that person to do that anymore? Are we, are we losing any benefits from not having that person work on that?
I mean, I think he did it just because it evolved over the years. I think he was a city electrician before he actually became the, the wiring, wiring inspector.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Bochum.
Can I ask a question to the mayor?
Certainly.
Mayor, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, and we can't get an electrician on duty that works for City Hall and works around the city for fifty thousand? Can you save fifty thousand a year?
The incremental difference is only twenty grand, so we are still paying eighty, even with an electrician that was doing it in-house. So, um, because our electrician is retiring, I mean, Harry's been with the city for a really long time. What the building commissioner and the DPW and the HR director investigated is that there are very few, I don't think we could actually find any other electrical inspectors that also do traffic signals. So, we figured that when we advertise a position, we might have zero people that actually have that skill. Should we be lucky, because I think that position is, is being looked at right now, um, to hire somebody with that experience? We could always reduce this, but we anticipated that, um, whoever we hired initially would not have any experience with traffic signals. So, when I transferred the budget over, I asked Lenny if, um, the idea that we would outsource a hundred percent of it, rather than outsourcing most of it, um, and then doing some on-call work in-house, twenty grand would be sufficient. Problem is, we don't know. So, this is kind of a test year. Um, I think we'll have better information next year, and we'll have better information, uh, once we hire an electrician. That electrician could, like Harry, evolve over time and be able to pick up some of these duties, but we don't know who that person is yet.
All right, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Kuschmerick.
I, I think this is, you know, ultimately, hopefully, nets, um, a, a positive gain for us in terms of, our building reaps the benefit of a full-time person dedicated to electrical inspecting and not, you know, pulled away from their job four times a day to run down to, you know, John Fitch and Pearl to fix a blinking light. Um, I, but I guess what I'm curious from you is, I, I know we, a lot of our infrastructure is pretty old, it's aging. We see, um, high, high volume of, you know, signalizations falling out during storms and such. Uh, do you have a pecking order of, you know, where you, where you plan to start dispatching some of these contractors to, to inspect, to look, to repair, replace? Or is this, are we in the situation where we're only in reactive kind of mode?
I mean, for starters, we'll probably concentrate on the, uh, you know, reacting to emergencies, but, uh, you know, for example, Harry told me that within a few years, we're gonna have to replace all of the light bulbs on all of the traffic signals, um, you know, because they're, they'll be getting old in a few years, and he said that's, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollar bill right there.
Is that, uh, so is, is a portion of that, I mean, are we gonna do this over the course of five years? Are we gonna do this all in one, one fell swoop in the next couple of years? Is that the plan?
Uh, I mean, right now, we don't have a specific plan for replacing the light bulbs. I mean, he, he thought it would be best to do it all at once, but, you know, it's a big, uh, a big nut to crack, to do it all at once.
So, when looking at this hundred, I, I'm understanding you're kind of saying, you know, that the, the plan right now is to be able to, you know, we have to be reactive. Uh, but is there money in here that we can say, "We know that two of these pieces are, say, forty years old, and we need to go out, and these are long overdue, they're gonna go any day." Do we have a couple identified that we know, or do we have funds even available to be able to go and replace a couple of these before they break, or?
I mean, once we get towards, uh, next spring, we can see where we stand on the budget, and if, you know, if we have a surplus, then we can fund, um, you know, replacing some of the outdated equipment.
Has Harry given us a sense before he retires or as he's retired?
Yeah.
You know, what the approximate age is of all of our equipment and, and kind of where we stand? Or do we then need these contract employees to go out and take a look?
I mean, he's given us a list of all the traffic signal needs, which will be a big help. The main advantage that we'll have for having an on-call contractor is when something goes wrong, where, you know, some major equipment does have to be replaced, we'll have, we can just call them up and have them do the work. Right now, there's nobody in place to do that, and then it becomes, you know, a big hassle to get an emergency declared through the state and, and everything else. And sometimes a traffic signal can, you know, sit there in the, in the dark for a while, just waiting for the whole procurement process to unfold.
Understood. So, at the risk of making my fellow councilors' ears bleed when I keep talking about plans, it would be great if over the next, you know, year, as, I know this is a new, uh, aspect of the budget for you in, in terms of planning, but it would be great if, say, by this time next year, you know, we, we kind of have a plan on, all right, over the next five years, over the next ten years, this is how we're gonna tackle the streetlights to get them upgraded, uh, to get them to the point where we can just continue, you know, regular maintenance or, or replacement cycle, uh, just that way we're not, you know, waiting for that forty-year-old piece of equipment to fail to, you know, to run and replace it. So, thanks for your efforts.
Any other questions regarding traffic signals? We'll move forward to Water Enterprise. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Counselors, uh, Water Enterprise, if you go to one ninety-nine, you wanna read from there, and then it's broken down in the pages of two oh one, two oh two, and two oh three, but it gives you the, uh, Water Personal Services, one million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty. Expenses, seven hundred and ten thousand. Water treatment expenses, six hundred and eighty thousand. Reimbursement, seven hundred and fifty. Debt service, one million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Capital expenditures, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, total of five million, seven hundred and thirteen, four hundred and sixty dollars. Any comments you'd like to make, John, before we get to questions?
Um, just a couple. I mean, the last couple of months since I gotten back, I know one thing, the guys are very tired from the winter. Um, they had a rough winter, as did DPW, dealing with water main breaks and snow removals, so, um, it's good to see them a little bit more rested. Um, one of the things I've been looking at, basically, the, you know, the financial health of the Enterprise Fund, you know, what we're taking in for revenues, what's going out, and I still need to, to get a little better handle on that. We are in the midst of a water rate study, uh, that I'm hoping will be completed in the next, uh, couple of weeks, um, through our consultant, Ty and Vaughn. So, that's something that's ongoing now, it'll help me just, you know, look at, you know, the finances of the, the Water Department. One of the things that we need to work on is a capital improvement plan. That's something that hasn't been done in a, a number of years. There's a lot of projects that are out there, um, some that have been completed, um, but something we really need to, to get back on course with and see what needs to be done, um, in the future. I have some ideas of future projects that need to be done. Um, our treatment plants, although they're, the buildings themselves, the mechanics of them are fine, the computer part of it. Basically, the SCADA system, um, the, the computer systems, they're fifteen years old in the regional plant, now ten years old in the plant on Range Road. And, you know, in, in computer time, that's, that's ancient, so, you know, our computers are still running on Windows XP and updating the software per computer, um, and, and the computer themselves is about thirty thousand dollars, um, with six at each plant, so, um, two, you know, with backups. Um, overall, we're looking at something, um, in the range of probably like three to four hundred thousand dollars to upgrade that whole system, so it's something we need to look at in the future. We're already experiencing some problems with it, and at the regional plant, we actually can't get parts for the main control panel. The gentleman that makes the repairs, he buys them off of eBay, either used or new old stock to replace, so it's something we, we need to, to look at upgrading, just to, to keep those systems reliable. You know, the plants themselves, the wires from those controls panels to the pumps, to the valves, those are all fine. It's just the, the computer aspect of it needs to be updated. Um, one of the other things we need to look at, um, next year, and it's a very... Um, one of the other things we need to look at, um, next year, and it's a very important project that needs to be completed, is our narrow reserve pressure-reducing station coming down from, uh, the regional plant in Westminster. That really needs some work, um, and it's actually on DEP's radar as far as, uh, the roof and things like that. Um, and, you know, looking at it, we don't want to just do the roof, we want to make sure that what repairs we do and upgrades we do there are for the, you know, several decades, so. Something else that's, um, a couple of the projects I just mentioned is the meeting house, uh, gatehouse and intake in Westminster where the regional plant is supplied from, um, you know, all the water that, you know, goes through the regional plant in Westminster has to go through that gatehouse. And that's in need of rehabilitation, but there's also a possibility of extending the e- uh, intake out, um, to improve, um, th- those characteristics. Another thing that needs to be done is, uh, the Mayor Metal Pump Station up in Hubbardston. Hubbardston, Mayor Metal is our largest reservoir, that pumps from the Mayor Metal Reservoir to the Meeting House Reservoir. That pump technology is, uh, 1950's era and probably upgrading that would, you know, result in some, um, improvements in efficiency as far as electrical use. And probably the big thing on the horizon in the next few years, um, is, uh, the replacement. The last time that we did all the remote reads for the city, those little boxes or kind of what configuration you have, um, the meters themselves were 10 years old at the time, so we didn't replace the meters at that time. This time around, they're now 20 years, plus those, the electronic registers are, the batteries are wearing out, um, they, you know, their lifespan is, uh, getting toward the end. So, it's something we need to look at in the future and that would be a, a very expensive project, probably in the range of $3 million to, to replace the, the meters and the electronic registers if you did them all at once. Hopefully, we can phase that in. Um, one thing we're looking at is a new technology, is, uh, cellular, where the actual meter is attached to a sending unit that sends it over, you know, the cell network, um, comes right into the computer in the, uh, water office and we collect our readings that way. So that's a possibility, it's something that's new. You hate to jump onto something like that, but we actually would like to start a pilot program this fall, um, with 10, um, people on that system. So I don't know if we have any volunteers here. But the nice thing about that, the system, is that you'll have an app on your phone so that if you have a leak, it'll send you, you know, a, a message. If the temperature drops below freezing in your basement, you can set up so it sends you a message. Um, it's very, you know, very useful in that, in that area. So, um, like I said, we'd like to start a pilot program, um, this fall with 10 of them just to see how it works. And I thought maybe the councilors, you know, might be interested in, you know, being our test subjects, so.
The councilors would have to know how to use their phones to do that, John.
That'd be true. So, you know, when we, when we, when we upgraded the meters in 2005, you know, it was the newest and greatest thing. And looking back, I was here then and, you know, undertook that program, is that, you know, if you just wait a little bit more and looked at the technology of all, the, the lifespan of the batteries went from seven to 10 years, now they're 20 to 25 years. And if they had waited, if we'd waited a couple more years with the new technology, that's why the way I'm looking at cellular, it's like, let them, let them perfect that and get the battery usage up there, you know, um, the battery longevity up there. Um, so at least we can give it a try. In the meantime, we are replacing some of them, um, just as they fail, um, some of the older ones, so just so that we can kind of nursemaid that system through to, to when we do the complete changeover. Um, you know, one of the things that, you know, I find this spring is, you know, a lot of dirty water complaints and we need to flush the system, um, it's something we wanted, we flushed one small area, not enough, um, of the whole city, but, um, something hopefully by the end of this year that we can do, because it really needs, it hasn't been, um, flushed completely in some time. So, um, at the same time, we can make sure the hydrants are operating correctly, you know, know which ones need to be repaired, um, grease, grease all the ports and make sure that, you know, the fire department needs them, they're available. So, it's something, that's one of my highest priorities for this, these coming months, so. Um, that's pretty much it, so.
Council Levine.
Thank you. Since I live in the area that Council Boesmer referred to, is out in the country with animals and beers and that, I don't, I don't have city water, so I wouldn't be able to do the test case. But I am concerned about, when you mentioned rate study, um, since I don't pay a water bill, since I don't get one. I do know that a number of years ago, people were kind of impacted with a pretty high, hefty rate increase at one point. Uh, I don't know if you were here at the time, but, um...
It went from two, I think it was 250 something per 100 cubic feet to...
A high percentage.
16.
It was a...
That was wastewater, not the water.
Okay, so the water hasn't gone, okay, so...
The water did go from, I think it was 250, I can't remember exactly, it's 316 per com- 100 cubic feet.
Right. The only thing I'm concerned about is when you mentioned rate study and that, and I understand the cost, everything goes up, don't get me wrong. But I also noticed that your budget is really robust compared to most other cities, o- other city budgets. I mean, you have an enterprise fund, so you kind of, you, you, people look at it differently. Well, we have the money, it's coming in, we can spend it.
Yeah.
What I'm going to ask you to do is to look at your budget as you go forward, that we don't look at just funding it all through a rate increase, we also look at, look at your budget, look at efficiencies you can make within your budget, cuts, ways to reduce your operating budget. Because that's really the key, is your operating budget. So, just a word of advice to me, as you're coming in, if, I'm sure you're going to come in with a rate, rate increase, I'm going to also say that, I hope you've looked at your operating budget, you're operating as efficiently, efficiently as possible and making as many reductions as you can there, because any rate increase is going to be, you know, obviously looked upon very, very tightly and scrutinized very well. Um, so that was my answer. And as you mentioned, other projects you have coming along, again, I would look internally to try and do that. And I guess the less money you spend here, the more money goes in the enterprise fund for, for debt, as you know, so.
Exactly. And if I could speak to that for a minute, I mean, you know, just because there's a rate study going on, it kind of, in some ways, it evaluates the financial health of the water, the water enterprise fund. We, they have been dipping in to the retained earnings in the last couple of years and it's down to 922,000 and some change right now. That's what's left in there right now. Um, I anticipate taking some out in this year's budget. However, what was taken out in this current and fiscal year 15, we're not going to spend as much as was budgeted, so hopefully we don't hit that retained earnings as much and hopefully in the next year too, so. Um, so we need to look at that, and like you said, we're looking to look at efficiencies too. We spend an awful lot on heating fuel. I know that, you know, one of our concerns is the fluid plant. It's been, um, with dehumidification of the, the building and the plant area itself, we were using, even on a day like today, we're using quite a bit of fuel oil, um, the air is cooled and then reheated for, for the humidification process. We need to look at those as far as efficiencies and also in electrical use too. You know, something like when I mentioned the Mayor Metal Pump Station, the upgrades there, that's a project that could fund itself if you look at what the electrical usage is. If we're going to have more, you know, pumps from the 50 areas and electric motors from the 50s are, are nowhere near as efficient as what, as what we have nowadays. They're probably better built.
Right, right.
But they're not as efficient. And that's a project, you know, upgrading the pumps could actually fund itself over, you know, a short time, so you look at the return on investment. So, I, I don't want you to think that I wasn't looking at those and I am absolutely just where we can save, um, you know, in those areas. And those are a couple of the, the high, you know, price tag areas in the budget is electricity and, um, and, uh, fuel oil. Something with the chemicals is that we're actually spending less than there was a few years ago and the, the head treatment plant, the chief operator, Rick Parvian, has actually done a great job as far as reducing chemical usage at the plants. It actually could be a lot higher right now than it is. Um, he's actually been able to eliminate one chemical, um, from, from its, uh, use in the plants and still achieve the same water quality, so that's a positive there, so.
But my point, and I'm sure you get it, is that, look at the, look at your current budget, you know, over the years, it's, you know, what you put in is what you've gotten, you know, and there's been really few cuts, I mean, but I think, you know, we have to stop becoming a little bit more, um, scrutinized at this budget, because if we're looking at rate, and I'm sure we are, and we, we're doing a rate study for a reason.
Yeah.
Um, and we haven't had a rate, a rate increase in a while. I'm not saying we're not going to have one, I'm just saying, when we do have one, I want to make sure that the budget itself is, is as tight as it can be.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, having said that, however, I, um, I would like to point out, I mean, the biggest change in the budget is I'm, I'm looking to add three positions in the distribution side of the, the budget. Um, and maybe I could just expand that, because that's really the only change in the budget, is right now, um, we have, including myself, there's 21 people working in the water department, um, six of the people, we actually have one vacant position, but the six of the people work in the treatment side, running the plants, three at, you know, each of the plants. Um, we have three people that are running the, the meter program, um, the backflow program, cross connections. Um, we have a couple of people, um, in engineering, one's, um, doing inspections, um, the other one's updating the plans and also helping with inspections and, and things like that. Um, we have a couple of people in the front office. Um, we have one reservoir guard, um, that basically, you know, goes out, mows all the dams, um, you know, keeps an eye on things out there. But in the dis- just the distribution portion of it, we have, um, five people right now. One of those, uh, employees is on the service truck all the time. He really can't get involved in any of the, the work on, you know, that's done for repairing leaks and things like that. He's always running around either shutting, turning on, shutting off for plumber's repairs. Um, so he's pretty busy with that. Um, he does help out when he can. Um, so essentially, we have four people that are, um, working, one foreman and three, I'll call them laborers, there's heavy special and so on. But, um, with that, we only have one crew to work on 190 miles of pipe all the time. So, and we're always pulling in the reservoir guard too. He's never, he's never out in the, the watershed areas at all, so, um, just to get the work done. Because you have people with vacation, people are out sick, um, so it's, it's ve- very difficult to put together a full crew on a daily basis, never mind a couple crews. And I, the reservoir guard's going out right now and working by himself out in the watershed areas mowing, and I, I really wish we could send somebody else with him, you know, in a more distant location. So, I am looking to add the three people so that we could actually have, most of the time, two crews working on a leak and be doing other things, including flushing, um, and also be able to offer some assistance out in the watershed areas to maintain the dam so they don't, they don't get out of control as far as growth on them, so.
My, my, again, my point is that, in the past, what water department's asked for, what department's gotten.
Yeah.
And, and you can even almost tell by the way the budget format is, uh, every other budget, every other, every other budget, it'll say FY16 versus FY15, you don't have that in your column. Mayor versus, Mayor versus requested, you don't have that, because you get what you get. You get what you ask for. And all I'm saying is, I don't think we can continue on that policy. We need to say, hey, you know, we got to be sharper, we got to be, ourselves as a council are going to look at this budget a lot more tighter. Because I tell you, if we get rate increases, people are going to be, want to know why we're getting them. And if there's a good reason for it, that's one thing, but if they're saying, well, you know, why do you have all these people? I'm just, I'm just preparing you for what could be for the future.
Yeah, no, I understand, um...
Again, I don't see in the format, but I guess that's why they have it, I don't know.
You're done?
Almost. No, yeah, I am done, no, I'm okay. But hey, if I, if I don't get the, if I don't answer the que- answer the questions now, ask the questions now, but I am, I just have a question to the mayor, Dick. Why is that format different for enterprise funds? It, it's really for them, because it's the same thing in wastewater.
Well, the only, the only thing I see difference in the format is that we're missing the two columns that show the differences between the, the last...
Right.
...three columns, which is basically a calculation.
Right. I, I just noticed it was different than all the other budgets, both the enterprise funds. So, maybe in the future, it might be important to have that there as we're looking to be more calculated in kind of the decisions we make.
Frankly, I think it was mostly the number of columns here, um, we go back much further, we go back three years further, and then the calculation moving forward is essentially only if there's differences, which I think you guys can visually calculate as none.
One other thing that would...
Mr. President.
One thing I would like to point out is on, uh, page 202, the contracted services, that's where we have a contractor come in for emergency repairs. I did, uh, put in less money in that budget item, it's not enough to cover all the, the people, the three people, but I anticipate, you know, having less of that work need to be done, or contracted out with the additional people. So I'm hoping, I'm actually hoping there'll be more savings than that there. You know, we have some pretty big, um, projects that go on. I mean, we're making work on a, a repair on a water, uh, the Water Street Bridge near the Marker Basket. Um, you know, that's something that we couldn't, might be able to do in-house if we had enough people, but right now, we've got a contract out and it gets to be very expensive, so, um, I'm hoping we can see some savings there with the additional people, so. And also be able to, you know, deal with some of the issues that kind of languish. I mean, we have, uh, discolored water complaints and we can't get to them as quickly as we'd like, because, you know, the crew's working on, um, you know, a water leak or something like that, we don't have the people to send over and, you know, those people with the discolored water deserve to, you know, have some attention to them, um, so they can do their wash and also, you know, um, prepare their suppers and dinners, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Joseph.
I, I guess it's disturbing to me that you said you have $900,000 in retained earnings and your budget is $305 deficit from what you plan on having for revenue?
Right.
So you, you, you plan on living on this, your retained earnings?
That's where the water rate study would actually, hopefully, uh, figure out what we need to do in the future years.
Okay, I, I guess if, if we want to look at what the city has for extra money, the $5 million that we have in surplus, it takes a vote of the council and nine, you know, two-thirds of a vote in order to spend that money. But who oversees the spending of the retained earnings in the water department?
Um, it would be the council, I guess. I mean, it's approved in this budget, I mean, I, we can't spend it without...
We approve it, then we give them the, you go ahead, use the... Okay, I, I guess to me, it should, that's, again, if you, it should be like our, our money that if, in order to spend out of the reserve, there should be a two-thirds vote required in order to spend out of the reserve, and it should be a separate vote and not just a vote as part of the budget. You know, that's, that's what we would have to do if we went into our rainy day fund, why isn't it the same thing as retained earnings? And I, I just don't understand that why we put together a budget that's $300,000 over what you plan on having for revenue.
Right.
Um, I, I always thought retained earnings was for meter projects, uh, the miles and miles of pipes that need to be replaced, um, and all of the projects that you want to do and not to balance the budget.
Um, I mean, one of the, one of the reasons they have dipped into it, and this year's another year, is that, you know, the water rates haven't changed for a number of years and expenses have gone up, so they have to dip into that. And that's why, you know, we've commissioned the consultants to do a water rate study to see, you know, what's going to happen in the future, the projected water rate revenue increases, um, you know, just from usage increases. For example, we just, we were sending out our last bills, everybody will be glad to hear for this fiscal year, um, but looking at what our commitment was the last year, there's, you know, there's about $200,000 more in revenue over the course of the year that we actually, you know, build out, so that's a positive aspect. So, you know, it's something that we looked at in the water rate study. So it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a water rate increase, they're going to project out a number of years and see, you know, how many new services are being connected, um, you know, what that's going to generate for revenue in the future. But at the same time, we need, we need, we can't keep hitting the retained earnings, we need to, to bring that back to even. Um, we also really need to reinvest in the water system too. I mean, a lot has been done in terms of water mains, there's some done as part of the CSS project, but, um, other areas, there's areas that, you know, experience discolored water on a daily basis, um, they really need their, their mains up, you know, upgraded and they really, I mean, there's some money in the budget, but not enough to, um, you know, accomplish a larger project. So, you know, that's something we look at with the water rate study, how much, um, you know, how much would we need to, to increase to be able to do half a million dollars of work each year? Um, something worth noting is in 2021, um, you know, some of the debt for the water plants is going to be retired. And then again, in two thousand twenty-six, there'll be another reduction. And after two thousand twenty-six, it'll be one million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, that'll be additional per year that I anticipate will be going toward, you know, investing in the systems, um, replacing water mains. So I, and that needs to be figured in with the water rate study, you know, um, how much of an increase we need to, to keep from going into retain earnings. So we still have money in case there's a issue with the dam or, or something like that. But also, you know, do some of the capital projects we need to get through to there, maybe some of these small areas where there's, you know, issues with that older water main. And then hopefully that'll dovetail into the future when there's actually a reduction in the debt for the water system that we can actually invest more money beginning in two thousand twenty-one, um, two thousand twenty-two into, to water system improvement. So I, you know, with the water rate study, it isn't quite so dire as that, you know, well, there's gonna be, you know, a huge rate increase. I don't, I, I honestly don't anticipate that. I anticipate something enough to cover what we're dipping into the retained earnings and maybe, you know, puts a little bit more toward capital. Cause there is, um, you can see in, um, on page two oh three is a hundred and fifty thousand toward, um, water system improvements. It's not really enough to do a project, um, you know, of any size, you really should be spending half a million dollars a year. But, you know, with maybe some increased revenues from more usage, people using more water, some more people coming into town, plus maybe a modest increase, uh, maybe phased in over several years, so, um, that might be able to, to bring us there. So, um, you know, my feeling is that, you know, I wanna see, the revenue that I wanna see to the water system is from more people being in Pittsburgh. You know, more people using water, I mean, that's, that's the way, you know, I was, you know, when I saw what, you know, what, what we, with our last billing, bill run just finished, what the commitment was adding up for the fiscal year, I was happy to see an increase rather than decrease because a lot of, um, cities and towns are seeing that through conservation efforts. Every time a house is rehabbed or you replace a toilet or you replace a shower head, what is it, it's low flow. And, you know, the time bond is doing our water research, they said they see in decreasing revenues in each, you know, each of future years because of water conservation. Um, and that's what the state wants to see, but at the same time, when you use less water, if it's the same price, um, it's gonna cause, you know, the deficit we're seeing now, um, so.
So I guess, I guess I wanna echo Councilor Bean's thing about looking internally.
Yeah.
And I just want to, in memory of Councilor Conry, um, I is, are you still as aggressive with people that are old as, old water rates as Mr. Munier was for a period of time?
Right now, we've been calling like larger, um, users, you know, when they haven't been behind, we have been calling them. But the smaller ones, um, you know, we haven't, I mean, you know.
So what do you have in outstanding collections?
I mean, generally from year to year, it runs about four hundred thousand, um, three to four hundred thousand, so. And on that money, we get fourteen percent interest, um, plus, uh-
If you're not getting it.
Oh, you eventually, actually, I, I got some figures from Dick and we actually do get it in subsequent years. By the second, by the second year, we've usually got about ninety-five percent of it. So, you know, everybody's a year behind. So actually, if you look at our revenues, it's amazing because, you know, the interest rates are so low on our investment income. You know, right now, the monetary balance in the enterprise fund, not what's in retainers, but the monetary balance is about two point one million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand in retain earnings. We only get three or four thousand dollars in interest, whereas the interest on the people that are paying late is actually over a hundred thousand. So, I mean, I hate to, you know, and maybe it's a bad way to look at it, but we're making fourteen percent versus a couple percent, um, on that money. And yet we still don't, we don't have to borrow money to pay our bills, we have two point one million, um, to pay our bills at any one time. You know, it's kinda like you have a ba- a bank account, but it's getting, um, you know, you're able to pay your bills every month and money's coming in. But, you know, you're not getting it till the following year, so. In, in, all honesty, it's not hurting us at this point. If it was, I, you know, we'd have to get more aggressive. The downside, you know, it's, with being aggressive is that it's very time consuming. Um, it just basically takes all your time because if you have a house where, um, say that the, the owner doesn't live there, you have to have each of the people occupying the house served, um, and give them the option of paying the water bill or making payments toward the water bill. If any one of them gets a doctor's note saying that they need water because of their health, um, then you can't shut the water off. So it's, it's, it takes a lot of work to get a little bit amount of money, so.
Just seemed like putting that on the sidewalk that that water was about to be shut off seemed to make the bills get paid a little bit quicker.
Yeah, I mean, it, it might, but- But that isn't, that isn't, I mean, I hate to say it, but that isn't following the law. You, you really need to go through the whole due process and just shutting, telling somebody you're gonna shut their water off, um, without going through the due process. It's required by the state, not just, you know, by the city code, um, you're open yourself to, you know.
I'm not advocating doing anything that we're not supposed to, I'm just saying that that's, that's the reality. When they get to the point where they're about to be shut off and they put a little notice on the sidewalk of where it was gonna be shut off.
What we're finding is that a lot of people, they fall like a month or two behind, you know, and, you know, they're eventually paying it, it gets leaned. I can't speak to the whole lean process, but, you know, it gets leaned with the real estate taxes and then we collect it at that point, so. And like I said, by the, the following year, um, ninety-five, about ninety-five percent of it's paid. And then by the, the second year after that, it's, it's close to a hundred percent. So, um, in the meantime, we've, you know, collected the fourteen percent on that, plus all the, the late fees and, and things like that. So it's actually a pretty big source of income to the water department. If we did lose that interest, we would, it would really hurt us financially.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Green.
I have some very specific line items that I just have concerns about. Repair and maintenance of building from ninety-six hundred dollars to twenty thousand dollars. What specifically is the repair and to what building?
Which line item is that? Which page?
It's on page two oh two, and it's about number six or seven down.
Number nine down. Repair and maintenance of building.
What, it actually was in two thousand fourteen, it was allocated, it was two, twenty thousand dollars, but what they actually spent was, uh, ninety-five hundred dollars. I've left it at twenty thousand, knowing that some of the pump stations really need some work. Our Bickford pump station, our Mare Meadow pump station, Narrows Road Tube, that's a bigger project, they all need, need, uh, new roofs. And actually been, um, specified by DEP in their sanitary survey that they do every two years or three years, the water system, that they need to be done. So that's why I've left it at twenty thousand, we need to do those in the coming year to meet, um, their requirements.
Would we be fined if we don't do those repairs?
Probably not, because the roofs are leaking, so, and they're falling on electro equipment, it's leaking into electrical equipment and on, uh, pumps and electric motors. So they really need to be done, so.
And that was for Bick, for Bickford and Mare Meadow pump stations?
Yeah, those roofs are from the nineteen fifties and, um, nothing's been done to them since then.
Is there a reason why?
I mean, it just in the last couple of years, they started leaking, I guess, so, and it's time to do them, so.
I mean, if you're bringing in almost nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue and it seems like a simple, I mean, it's a roof repair. I, I just don't understand why it would have to be such a emergency type thing where now all of a sudden they need to be done where there hasn't been that much put towards maintenance, um, ever before in, from oh nine. It's never been twenty thousand.
They've actually, they've actually been put off for a number of years, I'm not sure why, you know. And part, part of the expenses, you know, the state procurement laws and prevailing wage rates, because it would be construction, just not the repair. It gets to be a very expensive project, so, um, something that an average homeowner could probably have done for a couple thousand. We have to get engineers to, you know, put together specifications, um, not the city's fault, I mean, that's what the, the state regulations are. But, you know, it ends up, you know, turning a two or three thousand dollar roof job into a twelve or fifteen thousand dollar roof job, so.
All right, um, repair and maintenance of equipment from, just, it's two more lines down from twenty-three thousand to thirty-five thousand?
Right, that's what's been spent, you can see in two thousand eleven, it was actually thirty-two thousand, six seventy-six. You know, a lot of the stuff that we have is, is getting older.
So is it, is it specific repair or specific maintenance of specific equipment or just in general?
It's just in general as, as things break down, you know, they get repaired.
And then, um, down to hydrants and hydrant parts, um, four thousand to fifteen thousand?
Right, um, I anticipate with the, uh, I don't know, even fifteen thousand, it's probably pushing it, but, um, if we accomplish what I'd like to share as far as flushing the system, um, we'll have a number of hydrants that break, um, you know, we found are, are failed. I mean, many of the hydrants are sixty to seventy years old and, um, we'll be, uh, spending quite a bit on repair parts for them. That's, that's a downside of a flushing program, you, you, you reveal, you, uh, identify all the weaknesses with hydrants, um, you know, that they find during a fire, of course. But if you don't flush them, um, for a number of years, that, uh, you know, there's, there's issues that, that-
I mean, I'd rather be proactive than reactive when it comes to that, because the last thing we want are any more fires and then hydrants that aren't working to put the fires out.
I mean, fif- just to put it in perspective, fifteen thousand, and we have close to two thousand hydrants in the city. A new hydrant is about four thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars, just the hydrant itself, not the installation, so, you know, that's not a lot. We try to, we try to be efficient. What we do is when a hydrant's replaced, we'll take that hydrant and scavenge all the parts we can off of it to use in others. And they're, they're great at that, I mean, so fifteen thousand dollars, sounds like a lot, but they really make what they want by saving parts from older hydrants. Rather than, you know, replacing that, another hydrant that just may need, uh, you know, some particular part inside, so.
And then, um, one final thing, data processing. In years past, that's gone from fifty-six hundred dollars up to twelve thousand, up to seventy-four thousand, now up to eighty-seven thousand.
That's the monthly billing increases, um, it's something that we really need to look at. I'm not saying we go away from monthly billing, but it's very, very expensive. We need to do something, that's one area that we really need to be more efficient in, um, because we're printing all the bills in-house. We're sending them out to be folded, there's gotta be a, a better way. I know in, in Winchun, and I was the public works director, but I was also responsible for the water department billing there. And what we did is rather than having separate printed bills, they actually, you know, went through, they had a, a form that went through much smaller than the bills we receive now. And then they were folded in a machine and sent out that way, um, you know, it's something we really need to look at because it's, it's kind of a, a step back what we're doing here in Pittsburgh, so. You know, rather than getting a postcard type thing that you peel off the edges, you know, kinda like a paycheck you pull off those, as we had in, in Winchun and many cities and towns do. You know, we, we go through the process of printing out the bills, send them, have them folded, put them in, stuffing them and then mailing them out. It's, it's more expensive, we really need to look at, you know, trying to save some money there. Because the printing costs, even just the, the cop, the, uh, printing machines are very expensive between, you know, maintenance on them. You know, when you're printing out twelve thousand, eleven thousand bills a, a month, um, you know, it really, you know, it's a lot of wear and tear and a lot of toner, so.
Right, and how many bills are you sending out a month?
Eleven thousand.
But we're a city of forty thousand residents, so are you, there's only eleven or twelve thousand?
Eleven thousand, um, accounts. Ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two to be exact, with about three hundred and eighty-five, uh, inactive metered accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Kuschny.
More, more of a statement, um, just something to keep in mind as putting that plan together. This past, uh, this past winter, I think a hydrant was hit, uh, and one of my residents reported it, uh, on Mount Vernon Street. And, uh, you know, well, the response from the various departments were good, I, I think at the time I'd reached out to Commissioner Laxo, just to kinda start the process of reporting it. And, um, I know it took several weeks to, to, to get repaired and it sounds like, you know, it was kind of an antiquated hydrant. It's tough to get parts, we're salvaging, and I just, I, I just wonder, you know, how many of our hydrants in the city are like that? And, you know, um, how many are so old that we're scavenging parts from, you know, um, you know, thirty-year-old hydrants or forty-year-old hydrants in order to be able to repair? And where do we need to get to, to the point where we're, you know, where all of our residents can safely rely on and our fire department can safely rely on, when I'm going to that hydrant, it's gonna work. And if it gets hit by a car or it gets hit by a plow, that we've got the parts necessary to repair them on a quick basis. Again, you know, I think your reaction time was good, you guys were on it, it was more of a parts inventory issue. But I, it just seems like, you know, there's room for improvement there, um, as we start to address the plan, so thank you.
And speaking of that, um, you know, when I came on board, one of my concerns was because Chief Roy had reached out to me, you know, in the first week about, you know, hydrant condition. List of what hydrants were out of service, and they had really gotten behind over the winter months with all the water main breaks and dealing with the snow. We've really gotten that backlog down. Having said that, there are a lot of old hydrants that'll probably just work once and, and that's it. That's one of the downsides of the flushing program is that if you operate all these, um, you know, you're gonna break some of them. But also reveals the weaknesses, um, lets us inventory which ones work, which is great, but really identify the ones that aren't gonna work. So we can move forward, um, and get those repaired. So we, you know, that's, that's important, you know, we, we try to provide drinking water to people, but the other use of that system is fire protection. And we really need to make sure that the water's available for fire department so they can do their job.
Thank you.
Councilor Dina Tally.
So right to the point, if we pass this, we're approving the fact that your budget's not balanced. You're gonna have to dip into your savings account for three hundred thousand.
Right.
That's a third of what you have.
Right, that's what's been done the last few years, yeah.
Doesn't make it right, um, that's my first issue. My second issue is can you repeat the line item where there's three new employees that you'd like to hire?
That is in on page two oh one, labor, distribution, meters, watershed. It says nine there, I'd like to have, it'd be twelve total.
How much money is it per, per new hire?
Um, I'm not sure of all the benefits, maybe, um, Dick could speak to that, but, um-
Do we happen to know what the budgetary value is for three new hires?
I would just go with the, uh, the base pay.
Yeah.
Because the benefits, we've, we've kept it, maintained it at a level.
Yeah.
Uh, level now, so.
Here's a better question.
Have their salaries.
What if, what if one of us were to propose cutting those three new positions, what would that value be? And I'm, I'm asking this question because quite frankly, and it's not gonna be agreed upon by the, by the commissioner, I'm sure, as any other department had, but they gotta understand the point of view that I'm coming from, being a representative of the ratepayers is we're hearing talks about a potential, possible rate increase, there's nothing etched in stone. But me being the glasses half empty kinda guy, that signals to me there's gonna be a rate increase. Especially when we've dipped into our reserves for the last three years. Number two, in the same presentation, we're gonna hire three new people for a budget that we can't cover on our existing revenue stream. I hope you understand why that is fr- that, that, I have a problem with that. I'm not saying you don't need them.
Yeah.
But if we have a rate problem potentially and our reserves keep going down, I think it's not unreasonable for me to sit here and go, well, how, how can I justify telling the ratepayers we don't have the money for our operations, but we're adding people to the payroll? That would go to any department, it's not just relegated to water. So, well, I, I've heard the whole explanation, I just, I, I'm not-
Actually, could I just speak a little bit more? In all honesty, if I don't have those people, and I'm not just saying it, I mean, we won't be able to get the system flushed. Because every day that crew is, all they're doing is fixing leaks, um, and things like that.
So what do we do this year or last year? What do, what do we do the last couple?
Haven't been flushed in ten years. It's the last time I was here.
We can't-
Flush the whole system.
We can't flush the system by reallocating resor- how long does it take to flush the system?
Couple months.
But what does that require?
What does it require?
Well, what does it require to do, I mean, I don't wanna get into a whole thing here, but I'm not disputing the need.
Yeah.
I'm disputing the optics and the presentation to the ratepayer that we don't have the money to do what we're doing now and we may need to increase their rate, uh, distribution, but yet we're gonna hire more people. It, it just, it just, it's, it's hard for me to accept. I, I understand the position you're in and I know it, it's not a good position.
Yeah.
But my thought process on this isn't different than any others. I, I really would like to know what the value is of those three new hires. Can I, can I please get that number?
Salary wise, it, you know, if you ever take twenty dollars an hour, um, it's gonna be about a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Right, I, yeah, I figured forty-one, forty-two thousand, so a hundred and twenty-four would, I agree with that, for three.
Comment made earlier was, well, we're, we're decreasing some of our contract services, so we're gonna save money that way. But I'd rather spend more on contract services and less on full-time hires because of the Bennys.
Well-
I, I, I understand operationally it may be a little more money, but over thirty-five years, it isn't.
Just, just to let you know what the contractor service costs, I mean, we have a water leak that in one day, and it's about five thousand dollars to have that repaired, just on a, a house service line. For the contractor services, so.
I, just the comment was made that we're reducing our contract services by thirty and we're gonna add these people. Well, that thirty thousand dollar reduction and the addition of three full-time people, over thirty-five years of expenses with pension, healthcare, I think I'm hard pressed to believe that we're gonna save money through that avenue, just from a financial standpoint.
I'm not saying that we will, I said we'll reduce, reduce the amount, but the bottom line is that, you know, we have a system that's, you know, very old. And I have three guys, you know, I need one day, one's on vacation to, to try to go out and repair a hundred and ninety miles of, of water main. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just, it's an, it's an impossible task. I mean, we'll still do it, but, you know, when people are calling for discolored water, um, or something like that, because we can't flush, I mean, it's not much we're gonna do and eventually we'll be in violation with DEP, um, you know, for not flushing. I'm surprised they haven't, um, it comes each year, the sanitary survey flushed the system, but at some point they'll, they'll say, you have to flush the system and then we'll have to contract it out to get it done and that'll cost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year at least, so.
Okay, but if we flush the system in this FY sixteen?
Yeah.
How much time will that buy us till we have to flush it again?
It should be flushed a couple times a year, we'll be lucky, we're just trying to do it once.
Okay, but we haven't done it in how long?
Seven or eight years.
I, I don't wanna sound like I'm saying, well, to, to hell with doing it, let's just not do it. I'm, what I'm trying to get at is we've, if we make an attempt to do it at least once, it's better than nothing.
Yeah.
We spend the hundred thousand and not the hundred and twenty-five plus benefits, we buy ourselves a few more years and then we do it again. I mean, I'm not an expert on this, I'm just, I'm thinking about the fact we've done it in eight years and whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. My point is, is I cannot see the justification for adding people at a time we can't pay for what we're doing now. I, I just can't, that's like, that's like, uh, Unitil right now saying they need a rate increase to improve because their infrastructure improvements, they haven't made any infrastructure improvements, yet they want a rate increase. It, it's, it's not justifiable, so I, I just, I'm trying to present myself here in a way that doesn't sound like I'm ignorant of what's really going on. I just can't escape that fact. I'm looking at the status C through May and the revenues in the water department right now are three point, four point three million dollars we've collected through May, May close. The projection, the budgetary revenue for the, for the bud, for the department was five point five million. We're one point two million short right now through May, and if you project out what June will be based on the history, it looks like we're gonna fall short at least a half a million dollars this year.
I don't think we'll fall short that much, we won't spend as much as the, what was budgeted. We've actually, you know, and that's something Dennis has done, but last year, um, money was taken, each of the last years of the budget, money was used from retained earnings to balance it, so.
Okay, so I'd like to make a- Okay, so, I'd like to make a proposal that we cut a hundred and twenty-five thousand from water at the price fund, or wat- water, that, that line item. Thank you. And I, I just wanna add one more thing on that, that the average unspent money in water going back to two thousand and nine is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If I use the status Cs going back six years ago, the money that was budgeted for water versus what we spent, three hundred and thirty thousand is the average yearly expenditure that we haven't used. So, if we really have to flush the system, I believe very strongly we can find it in the existing budget, given the fact that we have hundreds of thousands left over every year. Thank you.
Want to mention this, President? On that, on that motion, was that for the, for the lecture, or is that the current, uh, retained earnings?
No, that, well, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I...
And you could rec- recut the retained earnings by the one twenty-five, or, I didn't know, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, I mean, if we cut the expenses by one twenty-five, that would reduce the need for a hundred and twenty-five retails. It's still not satisfactory to me. I don't want the retained earnings to be zero. I don't want us to use any of it. So, the budget itself is unacceptable to me, but it's better than the current state, in my opinion. My recommendation is to cut the personal services at one twenty-five.
Right, and, but the...
If I may, if I may, we're transferring money from the retained earnings. So basically saying, how I look at it, I rent my house, I rent on my checking account. I'm running out of money, do I go to my savings? We're going out of our savings account, right too much here. I'm saying, if we do it out of retained earnings, it's the same thing, but it, it, it proves the point we're talking about, you gotta live within your means, I guess what I'm saying.
So if we cut the one twenty-five, it'll reduce the retained earnings need by one twenty-five?
Right, and that, there is an order that, when we get to it, it's order one oh seven fifteen that you would reduce the retained earnings.
That's if we collectively vote for that down the road. I don't know if that'll pass, but, thank you.
We'll address it.
Councilor Boishman.
Hi, John, how you doing?
Good, yourself?
Good, thank you. We met, I went up to the wastewater treatment plant, and the, not the wastewater treatment, up there on Granger Road, the water treatment plant. It's a pretty neat place, you guys oughta go up and see. It's real, I was really educated. If we don't flush the system, is it so that the, all the rust and corrosion stays inside the pipes and, and it's one of the reasons why we are having problems with the water mains, 'cause they're closing up?
Right, I mean, you need to flush it annually, preferably twice a year. You know, it's something that, you know, each year that you fall behind, the more tuberculated that gets, and, um, I think, I mean, Joel's had some complaints from constituents about water quality, and really the only way to do it is to, to flush the system at least once a year, if not twice a year, so, um, you know, and at the same time, that tuberculosis is growing in the, the water main. You know, when you flush it, the loose material is removed.
Right.
But that loose material turns into harder material that can't be removed if it isn't flushed, so, um, we, you know, we see water mains, you know, tuberculated, you know, we have water mains from twelve inches tuberculated down to four inches. You know, so it's, it's definitely an issue.
Yeah, I saw that, he, he showed me a, a water main, I was really impressed. He had one cut out, and it was, the hole used to be six inches, and now it's like that, it was only like an inch and a half to two inches. And I said, "All that water's gonna..." You know, I couldn't believe it. It's really amazing.
And flushing, it's gonna extend the life of those mains, you know, because if, if it continues to tur- to tuberculate in, sooner or later, you know, as your experience on Hazel Street, that's a smaller diameter one, but how many houses are there and they, they don't have much water because of the tuberculosis, so...
Right. Now, my other question. You mentioned that the government asked us to conserve water.
Correct.
You're gonna die laughing when I tell you this. A couple of years ago, I planted a garden. A garden for three people or four people, and I'm watering the garden, like everybody waters their garden. And when I got my water bill, I looked at my wife and I said, "You gotta be kidding me? I could've bought more tomatoes for three hundred dollars than this is what, this is what?" I mean, I couldn't believe it. Isn't it true that if I use fifteen gallons of water, then I have to pay for fifteen gallons of sewage, right?
That's correct, unless you have a irrigation meter that, you know, that just...
Oh, so you can help, you can actually put in a different meter for irrigation?
And we've seen a lot of people do that, um, just so they can save on the sewer side, because sewer is, is, you know, much higher than the water per hundred cubic feet, so...
Oh, gee, I didn't know that. And here I am, watering my garden, and I started in the garden this year.
You know, there's a cost of the meter, and your cost of having a plumber install it, um, you still get a minimum charge in there, so, I mean, Melissa can help you to see, you know, look at your water bills and see whether it's, um, you know, makes sense to do it, you know, cost-wise. For somebody that doesn't water that much, they're not gonna recover, um, recoup the cost of installing it, um, but somebody who does a lot of watering, you know, might be able to, so...
Now, councillor to my right, councillor Deen Talley, says he'd like to see the budget cut a hundred and twenty-five thousand. If we gave you those three employees, if we gave them to you, I'm not saying we are...
Right.
But if we did give it to you, would you try to hire Pittsburgh residents on that?
Absolutely. You know, we, we, I'll be honest, it's, it's tough finding people willing to do this work. You know, after a winter like this, we had a couple guys that were, you know, on the verge of leaving, you know, when you're working in those conditions, in mud and trenches, and it's difficult. I mean, it's, it takes a special person to, to work in that and, you know, um, deal with those conditions. The other thing that we have is, you know, we have five people that are gonna be retiring in the next couple of years, and part of the reason for hiring some new people was that I wanted them to get experience before we lose these five people, um, so that they can just move up into the positions, hopefully, you know. The system is very complicated. There's four pressure zones, there's pump stations, you know, we have a large reservoir system, and we, there's a lot of knowledge with the five people that we're gonna be losing, um, the next two to five years, um, you know, maybe the next two or three years. And if we don't have people to pick that up, we have a couple young guys that are really, um, pretty good, but they have a lot to learn as far as, you know, knowledge of the system, so that, you know, when there is a break, they can shut down what needs to be shut down, not just, um, you know, run back and forth with plans, that they, they're knowledgeable of the system, so, um, you know, whether it's Tylo or Scott or, or whatever, so, um, you know, that's one of the other concerns I had, is that, you know, having people to, with experience that will be able to fill those roles in the future, so...
Now, my final question. I remember when I was a kid, we had the best water in the state, if not into, in the country, I think. At one time, that's what I was told, people from New Hampshire were coming down here. Do you see those days that we're coming back?
No, I mean...
Never?
The water mains in the city, I, I can tell you right now, are in very poor condition. A hundred mi- ninety miles a pipe, probably sixty miles, are in desperate need of replacement, which would be probably at a hundred and eighty dollars a foot, about fifty-eight, fifty-seven million dollars. You know, it's just something that, you know, similar to paving the roads, we're falling further and further, uh, behind each year. One mile a, a water main, maybe that's where you got, council of green, where you got the number from, one mile of water mains, um, about a million dollars between engineering, you know, insulation, um, a hundred and eighty dollars a foot essentially, so...
So it's one million dollars for one mile?
Yeah. And like I said, right now, I mean, probably in desperate need, that really needs to be done, is probably twenty to thirty miles, something that needs to be done. You know, would like to, ideally, I mean, which will never be ideally, because the city can't afford it, the people can't afford it, um, would be sixty miles in the next twenty years, you know? It's just, it's not gonna happen. You know, and, you know, the more that tuberculosis, I mean, we're seeing, you know, mains tuberculate down more and more, um, you know, it's just gonna be, I mean, I wish I could be more optimistic about it, but tho- those are the facts, so...
And I noticed, when I was up there at Ringe, and I noticed the other place, how come we don't go solar in some of your places, help dilate some of the cars?
Um, it's something we need to look at. Dennis had looked at it before me. You know, the, the dam area up at that plant would be good, but because of the angles and because of the issues with the dam, um, the Office of Dam Safety didn't want anything like that on there, so we really need to look at, um, you know, what something could go on the roof, but then you have the roof itself that you need to protect, um, on the building itself, so, um, you know, most of the dams are where are wide open areas where solar could work, that, um, you know, they're not suitable locations because of maintenance of the dams. You really need to be able to mow things there and, you know, also make repairs, or if there is a catastrophic event like happen at Level, that they, they can access it quickly, so...
All right, okay.
But something that should be looked at, we, we looked, I know Dennis also looked at wind turbines too, um, study up to, to the Ringe Road Plant, um, wasn't quite, you know, something that would, because of the wind currents, um, that would, uh, you know, bring the returns that you'd like to see, you know, based on the investment.
Councilor Bean.
I shouldn't be harsh on you and things like that, but, you know, since I'm almost as old as Councilor Boishman, um, I remember when the city didn't have an enterprise fund, and that's when they were, and it was during my administration, we put the enterprise fund in, for the exact same reasons you're talking about today, which kinda confuses me, is that we even put the enterprise fund in, is so that the, the system would be self-funded and self, and then, and then use that money to be able to build the system up.
Right.
The only thing is, when we first started, we did a large bond issue, I think, to do a number of large mains in large cities to help get it going. But the purpose of setting up the enterprise fund was so it'd be a self-sufficient, you know, existing entity which could help, you know, provide, um, you know, long-term projects and long-term vision for that, where what before was a city enterprise, when it was a city department, it was always, you know, the water revenues not always went to the water department. So, that was the whole idea behind setting up the enterprise fund. And I firmly believe a, an enterprise fund should be that purpose. The part that gets me a little upset, and I think the others, is using the retained earnings to, you know, offset the operating expenses. And not having, you know, a plan and, and, and maybe we oughta look at maybe a small borrowing to get, to get you caught up or something like that, you know, just like with the roads. I mean, we gotta do something, and it, you know, it's really, it's not gonna be the state or the federal government helping, it's gonna be ourselves, so, you know, we may, may have to look at a bond issue to, you know, borrow, you know...
And that's honestly something that we're looking at. Right now, our, our loan payments out of five and a half million is almost two million dollars. You know, you also have to realize that, you know, I worked here from two thousand, two thousand and five to two thousand and seven, our budget for the water department was the same as it is that I'm asking for right now. There's no difference, in fact, it was higher. You know, so, you know, if you look at what's happened in the last ten years, is that the water department, there was a modest rate increase, but since two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, there's been no change in the water department budget, but yet they're doing the same, um, you know, just can't do as much as water main work. I mean, it's gone toward, you know, fuel increases. We had a little break this year, electricity's up. You know, what, what, what we're looking at is basically stable funding for ten years. I mean...
I just wanted to give you the background, so you understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
It's not just I'm picking on the water department. I understand the whole process, it's been around long enough, but at this point, when I see us going into retained earnings, it's a signal to me that something's not working.
It's something, you know, that, uh, councillor Deen Talley pointed out, is that each year, it was three hundred and thirty thousand that was not spent each year, and we're anticipating not spending the whole amount here by trying to save money in certain areas. So in fact, you know, even though, I can't remember the exact number, it was taken out for this current year, I think it's about a hundred and sixty thousand that was taken out for this year out of retained earnings, that's not gonna be taken out. You know, it's been stable around a million dollars, give or take. So in fact, the bottom line is, even though, you know, the numbers say that, we're gonna look at, you know, savings in each areas and hopefully efficiencies whereby we don't have to take out the three hundred thousand, you know? And in fact, you know, when he says, when he said, pointed out, there's like three hundred and thirty thousand each year, I kinda looked at that and said, you know, we have three hundred and five thousand this year, and if we looked at three hundred and thirty the last few years, that we can actually cover that by not spending as much in each line item. But at the same time, you know, I hate to underfund the line item if something comes up, or, you know, like electricity costs were higher this year than they had been in the past. I mean, residential customers felt it, um, you know, as did, as...
I think we have to go, look within the budget. All I'm saying is, retained earnings, like using, it's like using free cash to, to balance our budget. Pass that, that, we're hopefully not, never gonna go back there again, but it's not the right, it's, it's the wrong thing to do. And again, I think using retained earnings to use an operating budget, it's not the purpose of it, and, uh, you know, hopefully in the future we won't see that again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Caddy.
Some of the councils were here when we had a last rate increase, and, um, I can tell you, if the other councils remember, it wasn't pretty. It was one of the most horrible times I'd spent in this room. And we were forced, we were forced, uh, by the government to, to vote for the increase, but it was devastating. Do we have a, a water commission, like we have a wastewater commission?
It's the Water and Wastewater Commission, we meet monthly.
Do we have, how do they, how do they, um, report to your budget? Do, do they approve your budget?
Yes.
They do? Okay.
And they voted favorably for this budget.
Okay. You were talking very early on tonight about putting a reducing valve in, coming down from Westminster.
Yeah, it's a pressure-reducing station, the Narrows Road's PRV station, it actually was a chlorination plant before the plants were built.
There was talk before about a turbine, inline turbine?
There isn't enough flow through there to generate revenue, plus there's other issues as far as, um, it being in a public water supply in the line there, so...
Okay. And do we sell to other communities?
We, we supply Westminster while they're, while they're watering, we have an agreement with them. We sell some to Lunenburg, um, we only have like seven customers there, and actually the, the Lunenburg Water District has reached out recently to set up some agreement for, for sale of water to them too, on an emergency basis.
I thought the condo projects that were built down near the tri-town...
Yeah, they're supplied off that line there, too.
Yep, and who sets that rate?
It's based on the city's rates, plus a, I would say thirty percent administrative fee, so whatever the city's water rates are, plus thirty percent.
So, they do pay thirty percent more?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for the water department? Thank you, John. Councilors, I know I had said we'd take a break after we finished the, um, budget pass, but we need to take a two-minute recess, and then we'll return with the wastewater enterprise. Be right back. Jurn for two minutes. Evening, like to resume the budget hearing, and we will continue with Water Enterprise, page one ninety-two, councilors. Oh, wastewater, I'm sorry. Wastewater Enterprise, page one ninety-two. Revenues of ten million, five hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars, personal services, two million, two hundred and sixty-eight, seven forty-three. Total expenses, two million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. Reimbursement to the city, eight hundred and ninety thousand. Reimbursement to the city, $890,000. Debt service, $3,614,000. Capital expenditures, $730,000. Total, $10,487,743. Evening, Jeff?
Thank you, President. I'd like to start out with a statement, if permitted. Similar to Water and DPW, it's been a very busy wastewater, a very busy year for wastewater. As, as all the council members know, we are under a consent decree, and there's a number of capital projects, studies, and other forms of improvements that's required as a part of the consent decree. So in addition to our normal workload of cleaning, inspecting, CCTV, documenting, condition assessing, and maintaining the city's sewer infrastructure, and then also operating the treatment facilities, we've had many, we've had many projects that have been completed or are in progress. I'd like to extend a thanks to my staff and personnel that have been instrumental in helping me in this transition to this new position. I was just late June of 2014 when I took over for Joe Jordan, after having been in DPW engineering under Lenny Laxo for three years. So the strength and professionalism of the wastewater personnel has been greatly appreciated by me, and it's been a great help to me in transitioning in this position. Everyone in the department deserves to be recognized for their accomplishments, and I'd like to run through a few highlights. Within the previous year, we reached final completion on the CSS Project 2B3C. This was the project that took place in the Water Street and Laurel Street areas. We also completed the sewer separation work for the next sewer separation job, which is the project which is still in progress. But there were consent decree milestone deadline dates where we had to separate combined sewers by December 31, 2014, and we were successful in accomplishing that. We have the supplemental environmental project, which was an element of the consent decree, and what that was, was a project that partially offset what would have been our civil penalty in the consent decree. This is to stabilize a section of Brookbank for Fallula Brook adjacent to Coolidge Park. We designed the project, put it out to bid, the contract has been awarded. The notice of award was issued just today. Construction is expected to commence this summer, and it's also scheduled to be completed this fall. We have had an unfortunate recurrence of a manhole damage to the manhole structure in Nash, in the North Nashua River. This is the second such occurrence in two years. Collection system personnel and treatment plant personnel collaborated to discover the damaged location, and we deployed our on-call contractor to stem the inflow of river water into the sewer collection system. A permanent repair and reinforcement of this structure is gonna commence this month, and in fact, we're, the, the contractor's gonna mobilize to begin the work on Thursday this week, tomorrow. And we do also have designs in progress to address the remaining structures. When we had this second such occurrence, immediately we were asked by the, the regulatory authorities, "Do you have any other of these structures?" And yes was the answer to that question. We had three additional such structures, one of which is on an abandoned gravity spur, but two of which are on live sewer mains. So we do have design in progress right now to address these structures. Mass DEP wants us to address these structures before the end of the calendar year, with the big concern being they don't want us to get into another winter season and have ice flowing down the Nashua River and hit these structures and potentially dislodge them again. Anytime you need to do reactive work, emergency-type work, it's more expensive construction work than planned and programmed work. Unfortunately, this is touching to comments raised at the Finance Committee meeting back in late April, I believe. The timeline of the progress is not gonna facilitate public bidding for the remaining three manholes, just due to the, the natural process of getting things developed to a public bid document state, and then going through the procurement process. Realistically, we probably wouldn't be in a position to publicly bid a project until late July, best-case scenario. As a result, the plan is to produce performance-based specifications and plans, and we would assign the task of the repair of these three structures to our on-call construction contractor. Contracts have been executed, and work is progressing for the development of an updated hydraulic model of the collection system. This model is gonna be instrumental in subsequent infiltration and inflow and sewer system evaluation survey work, and also in capacity assessment of the system. These are all elements of the consent decree that are coming a couple of years down the road. An updated model is also gonna be a valuable tool for wastewater, for analysis of the system, troubleshooting of the system, and evaluation and planning for possible repairs, rehab, or replacement sewer projects. To date, we've cleaned and CCTV inspected and condition assessed approximately 50% of the city-owned sewer system, collection system. This effort is greatly advancing our understanding of the collection system. As many councilors know, the collection system does date back to the, the early 1900s in Important system studies that have been undertaken this year include a hydraulic and hydrologic analysis of the North Nashua River to remap the 100-year floodplain in the area of the East Wastewater Treatment Facility. The results of that particular study indicate that we will not have to make a significant costly improvement to the flood protection around the Easterly Treatment Facility. That was looming as a potential cost adder to that particular project, and also a possible delaying, delay to that project as well. But the preliminary results of that study looked very favorable. At this stage, the analysis will be sent to FEMA for review and approval. They'll outsource it to a consultant that they have. Ultimately, it's gonna be required that the Pittsburgh City Council and the Lemonster City Council vote to approve the, the remapped floodplain. This is just a localized map revision affecting just a few map plates, and not a citywide remapping of the 100-year flood. Another study that's underway is a feasibility study, feasibility analysis for citing an anaerobic digestion facility at the West wastewater treatment site. The study, the, the draft feasibility study is indicating to us that the project would be technically and economically viable with a favorable cost benefit. More will be forthcoming with the study, and we'll be coming back to City Council, to the Planning Board, to the Water and Wastewater Commission, and also to the Energy and Environment Commission to present on this. Any comments, input that we receive back from presenting the draft feasibility report? We'll take that comment and incorporate it into what will become the, the final feasibility Lessons learned within the last year? We'll position wastewater as a leading advocate and proponent in forging a public communications, worker safety, and sound financial responsibility in asset management policies. Kind of playing off of some of the similarities between water and wastewater, I'm a strong believer in policies where we're adapting and adopting asset management philosophies. Asset management involves inventorying your system, condition assessing your system, evaluating the capacity of your system, projecting capacity needs, looking at the, the level of service, what's an acceptable level of service. Also, risk of failure and consequence of failure. All these factors get rolled into the decision-making and programming of work. Thank you.
Councilor D'Antali?
Jeff, how many positions, are there any new positions in this budget?
There are no new added positions. In fact, there's a removed position, we're no longer carrying the, the chief engineer. That position had, had fundamentally to do with the operation of the incinerator facility and also the Westerly wastewater treatment facility, and obviously, we're not operating the, the West plant as a treatment plant anymore, and the incinerator isn't operating anymore. So we're not, we're not budgeting to replace that position.
Now, how many positions did we add in wastewater because of the consent decree specifically? Do we have that number?
I, I believe it's the entirety of the collections system crew, which constitutes a collection system manager, a GIS engineer, six crewmen, which is a foreman. Presently, it's a foreman and five operators. And I believe the inception of the civil engineer position, there was a mindset where that individual would have a role in support of the consent decree needs.
So that's nine. Nine, 10 people?
Approximately.
Approximately. Is it fair to assume, then, that once the separation project is complete, we don't need those nine or 10 anymore?
I can't say that's safe to assume. As I mentioned, we're learning more and more about our system, the collection system in particular. The treatment plants are comparatively relatively newer, having been built originally in the 1970s, and then having been renovated with various upgrades. So by and large, the, the treatment plants, and they're also fundamentally above-grade infrastructure. The below-grade infrastructure is largely hidden, and you don't know what's really happened with that infrastructure. So we're, we're identifying defects and so forth, and we'll have to be looking into the, the maintenance of that as well.
The, the rate increase as a result of the sewer separation project has had a detrimental effect on ratepayers in this city, because the federal government seems to think that we're Beverly Hills, and that they know best what our residents can afford, because they don't have to pay for it themselves. With that said, the way that this sewer separation project was sold to me was, there were positions that had to be added as a result of this requirement, which then led me to believe, and that's why I asked you the question, are these positions required once the project is done in the system? Or were we always supposed to have these positions per these eggheads in Washington, and we didn't have them?
That's an excellent question, actually. They're not tied to the consent decree. Basically, we need the staff to properly own, operate, address backups, and the various needs associated with maintenance.
And, and very quickly, 'cause this is budget-related, how many more, when is the sewer separation project itself supposed to be complete? What is, what is the, what are we on track for?
The current one?
Right. No, no, the whole thing. When are we done with this mandate?
It's, ultimately, it's, it's quite a while, actually. In terms of the capital projects, the next big ticket is gonna be the secondary system upgrades, and then beyond that, we've got on the horizon tertiary treatment, which is addressing phosphorus treatment. Fundamentally, those are the big-ticket capital projects. We're also gonna have a wastewater, I apologize, I'm drawing a blank. There's a, an overall encompassing study that we're gonna have to do that's further down the road.
I think the phosphorus one, Mr. Jordan was here, he mentioned something about there was going to be a test conducted at a certain point to identify if the levels that we were previously reading at have improved enough to the point where we didn't have to separate the entire system? Is, is that correct?
I, I think you're mixing a couple points. What we, we've had an interim improvement to the system through the chemically-enhanced primary treatment, and we've improved our phosphorus removal, and that's helped us to hit an interim phosphorus level, which I believe was a half a pot per million. What's on the horizon down the road, from what we've heard, unless the new NITDS permit tightens it even further, and that's always a possibility with the feds, when the NITDS permit comes out, they may, they could always tighten parameters on us. But our, our understanding was that the long-term goal, that we'd have to reduce our phosphorus discharge down to, was I believe 0.2 pots per million.
So you said, you said earlier that it's, it's a long ways away. Can you give me a year when this whole thing is done? When, when is this sewer separation consent decree, when is this done? When, when are we gonna be done? 21?
I apologize, I believe it's somewhere between 2025 and 2030. I'd have to get back to you with it.
So we have, we have at least 10 to 15 years left to go with this?
Accurate.
Okay, and the rate increases that were imposed were to subsidize that entire effort? Oh, no, I'm sorry, there'll be future ones for the future projects? It's gonna be in phases, correct?
Excellent question, yes. The first rate increase, it was really targeted to encapsulate the capital needs associated with the first four projects over the first five years, as well as some other periphery needs in that timeframe.
So there'll be additional ones, and this was pointed out, well, when we took the vote before, that this was just the first...
That's correct.
...of a few, which really scares me, because it's something we can't avoid, but what I've had residents ask me about with regards to our budget on the sewer separation is, why isn't every city and town in the United States required to do this? Why isn't Lemonster required to do it? Why isn't Lunenburg, Gardner, Westmi, why, why is this not countrywide? What is special about us?
It all goes back to past violations of both the NITDS permit and also the Clean Water Act and the state Massachusetts Clean Waters Act. There were violations of those laws and that permit that put us on their radar.
So, so we basically are, are at fault for this?
That's accurate.
You know, I'm surprised there's not an open revolt by the residents for the amount of mismanagement in this area, really. Because that's the question I get a lot, you know, our budget's going up every year, the retained earnings increase all the time to pay for these expenses, how come no other community has to go through this like we do? Well, the answer is quite simple, the same reason why our city's in a financial pit right now, it's because we haven't managed the city well in 45, 50 years. And now, they're gonna get hosed again. So, we're talking about water going up, sewer going up. You know, I got a newsflash for people who aren't, don't live in this city. $18.80 some odd cents for 100 cubic feet, 300 cubic feet? 100, right?
Presently, the rate is, I believe, $7.30 per 100 cubic feet.
But, but my bill usually is $18 and change because of the meter reading for the water. That's the two, correct? That's the minimum?
That, that's correct, I believe.
Okay, so, so potentially, our customers, our residents, are gonna have to pay, in the next few years, $50 at least a month on water and sewer, which translates into 600 bucks a year, plus the taxes, plus the fees. I mean, boy, we're sitting pretty here. And what infuriates me the most about this is, this could have all been prevented. And now, every year that we have a budget presented before us, we can't do anything to this budget for the next 15 years, because the illustrious wizards of smart in DC say that we gotta do this. So, I wish I could make decisions on behalf of a population that I have no stake in. Must be nice. Because for the next 15 years, Jeff, your department's gonna have carte blanche over everything you want. And we can't stop it.
Well, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be doing things the right way and operating things in a financially sound manner.
Well, that's a good attitude to have, I just, still, I mean, a lot of these things we've added to your budget were mandated. So that really stinks, you know?
I understand.
It's a frustration point, one, 'cause I've always wanted to touch this budget, I really would like to, but what's the point? I mean, the, the, the environmentalist protectors are going to tell us, we can't cut from here because then we're not doing what they want us to do, 'cause they know best. Thank you.
Councilor Beal?
Thank you. First of all, I think when we, when we start talking about what the government's asking us to do, I think it's like everything else, if, the more you fight the government, the more they're gonna find things that you need to do, and I think this is a perfect example where we tried to hold off the federal government, we were gonna fight the federal government for years, when the reality really came down to is, we should've just did what they told us to in the first place, and we probably wouldn't be sitting here talking about it. The wastewater treatment plant right now is presently closed, correct?
West plant, correct.
The West plant's closed.
Let me correct that. It's not treating wastewater, and it's not discharging treated effluent. It is receiving wastewater and effectively, it's functioning as a pumping station...
Okay.
...that's lifting that wastewater up and sending it east to the, the plant out by the airport.
So, why would we be looking into operating, opening this up into a new facility, a new different kind of facility?
That has to do with managing a long-term need for sludge residuals. The treatment process removes solids in primary treatment, it removes solids in secondary treatment. Those solids have to get managed and disposed of. When we were operating the incinerator, we were burning those solids, and we would have an ash residue that would still have to get landfilled. The incinerator shut down operation a few years ago, and since that time, what we've been doing is de-watering sludge, and we've been landfilling that sludge at the Pittsburgh Municipal Landfill. That landfill has an estimated capacity of 10 remaining years, so approximately year 2025, it'll be expended. And it's, it's no easy matter to get landfills capacities increased, be it vertically or horizontally adding cells. It's a very difficult process. So there is a cost associated with managing these materials. Once we no longer have this nearby location to dispose of this materials, we'll have to manage it some other way, which could be shipping it to a landfill in New Hampshire, or could be shipping it to an incinerator down by the Upper Blackstone. So what we're looking at here is an opportunity to manage those sludge residuals at no cost to the city, and that, that process would end up with a reduced volume of materials, but that, that material could be used as a soil augmentation, like fertilizer.
Okay. So has there been a cost analysis done? Because if you're talking 10, 15 years, that plant's gonna be 10 to 15 years older, which means, I guess my, my whole thing is, are we better off running this plant for, for the uses that you're looking at? Or does this plant have some value as it sits right now to somebody else who might wanna be interested in running this facility, that the city could just sell it to them, or rent them the, the building for now? And maybe make some revenue back on it, instead of us trying to operate a facility that continues to get older and older, and we need to make upgrades on?
That's an excellent question. I, I don't immediately have an answer to that question, but I, I think it would be, it would be prudent for that question, again, to be asked once I come before the council to present the draft feasibility report for that proposed repurposing of the West Treatment the draft feasibility report for that proposed repurposing of the West treatment facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Green.
Hi, Jeff. My question, can you explain to me the city billing expense?
I apologize. I couldn't hear you.
Yep. City billing expense from in years past, $130,000 up to $172.500.
John Delain can probably help me out with this a little bit. This has to do with water handling, both the billing for wastewater and water billing. So there's, there's costs that are paid out for the purposes of billing service for sewer service.
Doesn't, doesn't it go on the same bill?
Actually, that, that amount, just so if you don't mind me piping in here, but the water department handles all the meters, does all the billing, sends out all, all the bills, and that's the wastewater's contribution to that work. And with the monthly billing, it was increased to help cover the additional costs that were shared between water and wastewater. So the water department does everything, you know? The sewer is based on your water usage. We take care of the meters, we do all that, we generate the bills, we read the meters and send them out, and wastewater pays, basically pays the water department $172.500 a year. And the increase, again, was due to the, the switch from yearly billing to monthly billing.
Where in your budget would it say that you're receiving $172,500 back into your budget from this bill?
It's on the revenue side. Page 200, halfway down. City water reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question is, we had learned a couple weeks ago the importance of when it comes to purchasing product, and I see that you have a lot of chemicals that you have to purchase over and over and over again. So I'm wondering if, in your procurement or your securing of these chemicals, how far out do you have this procured? Or do you have to go back every year and request these chemicals?
It's been done a few different ways. Usually, it's not annual procurement. It has historically, on occasions, been done as a base year bid with city option years. So it would be up to the city to exercise option year one and then option year two. We've also done it as a hard two-year bid or a hard three-year bid, where there's a unit price for each, for three years of chemical supply.
So when I see an increase from $15,000 in '09 up to $92,000, well, actually $63,000, but we're budgeting 75, is that because the, the actual amount of the chemical has gone up that much, or?
I apologize. Can you tell me which chemical are you looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking specifically at ferric chloride.
Okay. Ferric chloride is one of the key chemicals that's associated with our chemical-enhanced primary treatment. Basically, it, it's functioning to coagulate phosphorus together with a polymer so that we can have materials that'll come out, settle out, and become part of that sludge that we have to dispose of.
That's the heavy stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So if, if it weren't treated with this chemical, it would stay in solution, it would, it would pass through treatment and ultimately get discharged to the river. And we would end up with a discharge that's in excess of a permit, permit level.
Okay. So is this one of the chemicals? I specifically have a question about the ferric chloride and the sodium hypochlorite, hypochlorite.
Okay.
Because, again, it's almost, you know, more than doubled in price, so I'm wondering if it's, if it's because we're, because it's gone up in price, or because we're not securing it properly, knowing that we need it every year?
Okay. I did anticipate questions about chemicals, so I'll, I'll discuss that a little bit. In, one thing that probably caught your eye is a significant increase for sodium hydroxide. That, that was the result of an under-budgeting for that particular chemical. And the reason for that was, we were adding magnesium hydroxide, which it was believed to have been providing that same benefit that the sodium hydroxide was providing. And sodium hydroxide, what it is, is it's a pH adjuster. It raises up the pH level. Part of the reason for why that's needed is the ferric chloride addition at the primary stage is actually lowering the pH, and it's also removing alkalinity from the water. So because the magnesium hydroxide wasn't as effective as we thought it would be, it meant that we needed to add more sodium hydroxide than what we were planning. So that chemical usage turned out to be more than what we were anticipating. So that's the reason for that increase. Speaking to the other chemicals that are key to the CEPT process, the chemically-enhanced primary treatment, ferric chloride and polymer, those are the two chief agents that are removing soluble phosphorus from the wastewater. Magnesium hydroxide, that goes together with the ferric addition, and what that's doing is raising back up alkalinity in the wastewater and also providing some increase in pH. Sodium hyperchloride also gets affected. CEPT really kicks in when we have wet weather events, and when you have a lot of flow that's coming into the treatment plant, it ends up being too much for the secondary systems of the plant to handle. So what we have to do is route part of that flow around the secondary treatment systems. So, in so doing, we're doing this chemically-enhanced primary treatment to improve the efficacy of treatment. So that's, that's why these chemicals are needed. So when we're, when we're doing that type of operation in a wet weather event, we're also adding more sodium hyperchloride, and that's a chlorine disinfectant. And then sodium bisulfate, that's related to sodium hyperchloride. Sodium bisulfate is a chemical that actually deactivates chlorine, free chlorine that remains in the wastewater, because we can't be discharging wastewater effluent to the, the river, to the environment with elevated chlorine levels. We have to deactivate that. So they go hand in hands. We have to hit it with the chlorine, and then we have to de-chlorinate it. Does that?
So it makes sense, yes, but I'm, I'm wondering if we're, are we doing everything that we can to lower the cost of those chemicals, knowing that we use them every year, every day?
The natural partner for this type of thing would probably be the water department, and I'm not sure to what extent they're using similar chemicals or similar concentrations, or if a joint bid with multiple chemicals could be done. The problem is, not every chemical producer will make every type of chemical. So what we normally do is put a bid out per chemical, knowing that any one vendor tends not to produce multiple chemicals. So if, if there are a way to partner with water, we'd be open to looking into that. Short of that, we are putting it out by the competitive bid process, so that's our best opportunity for getting the best prices.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilor Joseph.
I didn't see city billing in the water enterprise. You said that this was your portion of the city billing, but under their expenses, there's no city billing. So what's their cost, what's their portion of the city billing? And where does that reflect?
They can't answer the water department question.
I, I, when you said that you had 11,000 accounts and that you were billing them monthly, and I figured out that that was about $100 and whatever thousand dollars that you have here.
That?
$130,000 or $140,000.
That payment in wastewater shows as a revenue to us, but we don't show that because it's basically in, in our people, the people that read the meters, you know, Melissa that pays for her salary, part of her fat salary, because she, you know, generates the bills, pays for the printing. So we don't show a city billing because they're just paying for, and it's revenue that covers their share of each of those people doing work, plus the materials replacing the meters, so.
But what is postage alone for 11,000 accounts being billed?
A lot.
Forty-nine cents. I figured it out for.
Times 12.
Right. It's $5,400 a month, so it's 54,000, so.
Monthly billing helps as far as people budgeting. It helps as far as people getting behind because they have a reminder in the following month, they can't ignore, you know, they can't ignore for three months, but at the same time, it's very costly to do.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering why the, out of the $60,000 that you pay for postage, that it's not, that it's in wastewater, but there's nothing in water? Postage has got to be, it's got to be $60,000.
Part of data processing.
Okay.
Maybe in that line of data, if you broke down separately.
And as you said, the personnel services.
Right. Actually owe us a lot more money, but we haven't approached that subject yet. We have multiple people, and I won't go to that.
Let's not play that game.
That was just my curiosity.
That cuts both ways, you know?
Your surplus or deficit for this year is greatly reduced by $2 million.
I'm sorry, counselor.
On, on your page 192, your total surplus and deficit is being reduced now down to $15,000.
There, we're projecting lower revenues with the upcoming fiscal. If we were to look at revenues, we're projecting sewer use charges, which is that billing that goes to residential customers, to businesses and so forth, not to special accounts. That's pretty steady. One thing that you see, there is a goose egg, and that goose egg is associated with a line item called commercial slash incineration. What that really had to do with was revenues received for incinerating sludges that came from other communities. And the last straggler we had for that purpose was the city of Lemonster, and they sent us the last of their sludge in August of 2014. So beyond that point, there was no more revenue associated with that. Another item for revenue is a line item called industrial billings. And what that really is, is the paper mills. We're projecting that that's going to be less revenue. They're not using quite as much wastewater. That's one component of the billing for them. Also, they have capital, capital billing for past capital projects. There's an allocation to each of the mills. While in each successive year, that figure is going down for each of the mills, unless we were to have another capital charge assigned to the mills as, as a form of cost allocation.
I'm just assuming that the surplus is, is going into your retained earnings so that you can continue to pay off your debt service in the future when all the projects still can, are you still healthy in retained earnings enough to pay the debt service?
Well, that was a question also that came up with the finance committee a couple months ago, and I did talk to Dick about that, and we looked at the last few years. And I had a brief summary that was incorporated into the council packets for the meeting that got canceled for last night. What we did was, we looked at fiscal year-end balances for retained earnings from end of fiscal '11, '12, '13, and '14, and of course, we haven't totalized fiscal '15 yet. But by the end of fiscal '14, the end balance on retained earnings was just shy of 7.5 million. So to continue that same line of discussion, when we were planning the rate increase and we were, when we were anticipating having to pay down on SRF loans, we were anticipating getting hit with SRF loans at a sooner timeframe than we actually did. So the end result of that is the retained earnings has climbed to a higher level, which is that 7.5. I believe in the initial estimation, we were anticipating that retained earnings would ascend to somewhere on the order of about four and a half million before we started to lose it again with payments on debt.
Okay. So you're healthy?
For now.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Koushmarik.
This is with particular regard, I hate having to keep going back to this. This is with regards to city billing and the data processing on the, on the water management side of things. I, I mail to tens, if not hundreds of thousands of people on a monthly basis, and seen things done in-house, I've seen things done through a consultant. I'm just amazed that we're spending at least $260,000 on billing and postage and data processing for, for the billing aspect of things. And it sounds like we haven't effectively put this out to bid to see what a private alternative could be for an outsourcing. So it's $260,000, it seems like, in costs, without consideration of, you know, staff time, resources. It sounds like there might be multiple personnel dedicated to doing this. Well, I realize you might still have some of that, some human assets devoted to this. It seems like an incredible amount of money. So I, I would love for, I would love for you to both prove me wrong by next year's budget and come back to me and say a private alternative to, you know, outsourcing would cost us $100,000 more. But I look at this and question, you know, can mail houses effectively utilize post office rates that save us, you know, tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in postage each year? Because there's incredible benefits to, to looking outside sometimes. So I'm hoping you can prove me wrong by next year, but this just seems like insanity to be spending hundreds of thousands.
Something I'd like to clarify, that $172.5, is that what it is? That it comes from wastewater to water? It isn't just for the, you know, paying for the postage. A good portion of it goes toward the meter replacements, the remote reader upgrade, you know?
I completely understand, but these are all, these are all costs that you don't have to afford when you, when you have a contract and you just push it out to a, you know, to an outside entity to say, we'll pay you $150,000 a year to put out 11,000, 11,000 accounts on a monthly basis, set, you know, set rate negotiation each year or for a decade.
Those people are actually physically going in, replacing water meters as part of that. I mean, the money that he helps pay for some of the salaries for those people are actually never, nothing to do with the billing, just putting the meters in and the cost of each, you know, $230 meter that we have to replace now and then, so.
I understand there's, you know, there's, there's costs that go here, there. I am asking if you could, for next year, do me the favor of, you know, looking at, doing a cost benefit analysis of doing this in-house versus outsourcing, because it just seems like this is a large, these are large dollar figures for us to be talking about.
It's just inefficient, too.
Absolutely.
Like I spoke of earlier, so it's something, I, I figure we spend about $100,000 a year between postage and mailings doing the monthly bills.
I would love if we could save $100,000 that we don't have to take out of our enterprise fund. Thank you.
Any other questions for wastewater? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, we're past our allotted time, but we have four departments remaining that all should be quick, so I would ask that you bear with me and we'll get those four done. Then we will reschedule the final review and the special meeting with the city council. We're going to the city clerk, page 29. Good evening, Madam Clerk.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm sorry. City clerk, personal services, $247,659. City clerk expenses, $4,910. Total, $252,569. Anything you'd like to say, Madam Clerk?
No, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions from the counselors?
I just have one comment to make that.
Councilor Beal.
I appreciate every time I go into your office, the people are very, very friendly, and it's really nice to see warm faces when we go into city hall, so thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move forward then to city council, page 29. City council, personal services, $110,000. City council expenses, $21,875. Total city council, $131,875. Total city council, $131,875. Any questions? Councilor Dean Tally.
We cut $1,500 from education and travel, or make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation. Any other questions or comments regarding?
How much was it?
$1,500.
The whole thing, education and travel.
$1,500.
The city council budget? We never use it, and when we did use it, I think we spent $100 bucks.
Any other questions or comments regarding the city council budget? Councilor Green.
Yeah, my question goes directly, I guess, back to Councilor Dean Tally, is when there are conferences or things, I guess, that we would be looking to maybe be interested in, is that, is there reimbursement to us, being a city counselor, or is that self-paid?
If there is money in the line item for education and travel, one could get reimbursed.
Well, I would like to put, I'd like to put the $1,500 back in the account.
You can't put the $1,500 back in the account. What you can do is, when we have our final meeting, and it comes before us for a vote to remove it, you can vote against it.
Thank you.
Councilor Koushmerik.
Just to respond to that, you know, I admittedly biased, you know, I was talking to our city clerk earlier this evening, that, you know, knowing that these funds are available has actually incentivized me to look to do, to attend a conference I might otherwise not have attended for this following year for an educational opportunity for young elected officials. So, you know, I saw this as a useful, a useful fund. I certainly realize that we haven't necessarily utilized it to its fullest capability in the past, but I think having an opportunity for counselors to consider, you know, doing education or professional development that they otherwise might not be able to do is helpful. Thank you.
Councilor Bean.
Thank you. Through you to Madam Clerk. So, when we attend, or I know that counselors have attended the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting in the past, has that come under this account here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Dean Tally.
We're talking as if we didn't know the account existed or that we could use it. We haven't used it, we probably won't use it, and if we do go on a trip, I think we should do what we tell a lot of people in the city to do, and pay for it ourselves. Because why don't we put a line item in the budget to fund laptops for the council? What the hell, right? So, if I have to go on a conference to Boston that costs me $25 in gas, I'm going to do it on my own dime, because I am not going to ask the taxpayers for money, when we just increased our stipends last year, $1,000. I got a lot of issue from some people in this room, but we're going to be stingy on a travel expense account that we don't even use. Thank you.
Councilor Tran.
I've always advocated to fund this account, because I believe it's something that counselors should use and educate themselves on legislations that have been passed throughout the state. This account is not about paying for gas or mileage or what have you, it's for conferences. $1,500 doesn't even, is not enough to cover all city councils in this room to attend the Massachusetts Municipal Association. And that is something that I encourage everybody in this room to attend. I always say that when it comes to this account. So, you know, if we don't use it, then it goes back into the general fund, and it can be used for something else. But it should be available for you guys, as a council, to be able to use it, to go and get educated on matters that affect the city and affect the state. Thank you.
Move forward to license commission, page 31. Election personal services, $47,535. Election expenses, $40,095. Total elections, $87,630. Any questions on the elections? I have no questions.
No. I had a comment, say, if we just cut away with this, we just could save the money and just keep going, but never mind.
Okay, Clerk. And last one is the license commission, let's see, license commission, personal services, $6,200. License commission expenses, $3,050. License commission total, $9,250. Any questions on the license commission? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Counselors, I will talk with the clerk, and we will reschedule the final review, followed by the special city council meeting and vote on the budget.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. Thank the counselors.
Thank you, Mr. President.